Mayor Messer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Here.
Mr. Sellers.
Here.
Mrs. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Lamara.
Here.
Mrs. Eggers.
Here.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Please under the indication and the pledge. If you'd like to get some completes. Father Niven, I just thank you for this day. Uh, thank you for an opportunity to serve our city and our community, Lord. Thank you for this time of year, Lord, where we can get together with family and friends and to celebrate the blessings that uh that we have living in this country. Thank you for Jesus in your name, I pray.
I would like to testify in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Taking into consideration of council meeting minutes, these are uh your, uh, these are not at your desk. Uh, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, our motion to adopt.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Burke, please hold on.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Consideration of work session minutes, October seventh and then October twentieth. Uh, these are the minutes that are at your desk and that were emailed to you. Will anybody need to abstain from either of these takes? Very good. Uh, motion to adopt?
I'm moved.
Second.
Mr. Burke, please hold on.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
All right, next we will uh move into our public hearing for the Ray Rock development rezoning. Uh, can I get a motion with word to open that public hearing?
Second.
The Zorro.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
So the public hearing is now open. Uh, Mr. Bronke is going to run through some slides for us and then you'll have times to uh art is.
Yeah, yeah, Greg Ors.
Greg Ors will be running through slides uh and planning. Thanks for having me. Have time to conversate about this.
So once again, this is a map amendment for Ray Rock Farms. This is a P U D concept plan. Uh, through the zoning map amendment process, the applicant is Anna Schwartz Trust. The agents, uh, Treese Home, Hensley Home are both here along with M S P Engineering to answer any questions. The request is for a rezoning plan between State Route forty eight and Drake Road from rural residential to residential planned unit development. So a little bit of vicinity map to get you oriented with the site. In the black is subject property to the east is the high school, uh, down to the south is Miller Road. And then to the west slash south is the junior high. So just a reminder, um, back in two thousand twenty four or two thousand four, the Lebanon School District extended sanitary sewer through this property to provide service for the high school. Um, it's important to note that if development uh does not occur within the city, it will develop in the township with access to the sanitary sewer. Uh, the Ray Rock Farms is proposed as a density of one point five or one point six five units per acre. And this is lower than comparable developments within the township, which average two point three five units per acre when served by sanitary sewer. So anytime sewer is available within an area, you do have to tap into it and you can't do septic within that. It's not permitted by the state or federal. So the future land use map within the envision Lebanon plan, um, you can see the different categories. It's a suburban residential is the uh area that's in yellow, sort of to the southern portion of the property. And then it's meant to be a transitional rural residential as you head north. So the idea is to get less dense as you head away from the city and transition into the township. The dark green areas are represented as parts of open space. And if you note from the last one, they follow the creeks uh and river corridors that are through this area door, this area. So the P U D concept plan uh is in alignment overall with the overall uh envisioned Lebanon comprehensive area plan for this area in terms of building types and green space conservation. The rezoning to a residential P U D district requires submission of a P U D concept plan, which we'll review in a second, emphasizing integrated design and cohesive community planning. So the total proposal is for five hundred and eighteen single family homes on uh three hundred and thirteen acres. Like I said, that's about one point six five units per acre. So the development features six distinct lot types, offering a diverse range of home sizes, square footages and price points to appeal to a wide range of homeowners. There's a dedicated section of patio homes that is included to accommodate older residents. And that was mentioned multiple times in our air, our plans, like envision Lebanon, to provide more patio homes for our older population. The plan provides two access points from Drake Road and then a separate access point from State Route forty eight. There's also a sub street connection to the north. And with recent discussions, they're also going to provide a stub street uh connection to the south to the Stratton property. So here's the concept plan. Once again, Drake Road and forty eight are the two areas that's in between. As you come off forty eight, those are more of your state lot houses. There'll be a connector point into the hundred foot lots, uh, as you get into the purple outlined area leading into eighty five foot lots. Both of those allow for side access garages, and that's kind of the intent of both of those districts. Similar uh in countryside as well, uh, kind of in that Thorny Ridge sort of area with that side access driveway. And then it leads down to seventy foot lots towards the south middle. And then the patio homes are in that uh northeast section. And then the other fifty two lot section with more market rate homes are in southeast section. So it's kind of overlaid uh over the existing area. This is so if uh folks who come up to talk have a a question or want to show off where they live in relation to the development, we can refer back to this slide. So overall, the development will adhere to the Lebanon zoning code regulations. So it's trying to stick to our existing base zoning districts and codes as much as possible. This body has done a great job over the last number of years of updating our code to kind of get it right where we want. And we really want new development to follow that code in most ways possible. So however, there's a couple of small deviations that they're looking for. So they're actually going to embed an increase in the minimum lot widths for the R A, R one B and R or R one D zoning districts. And then ask for a small reduction in the front side yard setbacks for the R one A and the R one D zoning districts. Um, they are going to establish that uh dedicated zoning district just for the patio homes. So these modifications are intended to support a more flexible, diverse residential layout while also maintaining overall consistency with the city's zoning framework. So on our zoning map, this is how staff would like to interpret this if this development goes through. Um, that we would have a P U D overlay for the whole development, but it would be zoned R one A in that area over there, just in case there's any changes in the future. So long as it meets the R one A zoning district standards, it provides a little bit of flexibility for staff and the applicant. R one B for the uh or or the sort of yellow area, R one C for the orange, and then the two separate R one uh Z or R one D districts on the east side. So there is quite a bit of open space, hundred and ten acres total, which is thirty five percent of the development. Will be dedicated open space and recreational amenities maintained by an H O A. So these amenities include trails, the buffer areas, entryway features, retention ponds, and a pool with a pool clubhouse. Uh, this is a proposed bike path connection uh that will make its way up to the high school, which is something the city's been looking forward for a long time for pedestrian safety for those kids trying to make their way to the high school. And then it would continue up the path. Internally, these are sidewalks uh that connect to different portions. Once again, uh countryside has this as well, where these interconnected sidewalks, and you see people walking around the block all the time utilizing that. Otherwise, the green space saves a lot of the green space corridors. And then there's a nice open space uh area for green in this particular area. So even though this is fifty two uh foot wide lots, which is a little denser than um we were initially proposing. The cluster style development that saves that amount of green space near the creek while also providing the central space. So early iterations had houses in this as well. And staff has worked with the applicant to take those out to provide a nice space within there. So overall, if you kind of take the square footage area here, it's about a hundred and five units, and that's on fifty acres. So just a little bit over uh two units to the acre uh on that. So if it was spread out, that would be uh half an acre lots within that area. But in order to save that creek and provide that space right there, they're going with a cluster style development. So blue line streams will be preserved as part of the development and the riparian corridors will be maintained to minimize the effects of stormwater runoff. And then most of the stormwater, this came up at the planning commission meeting, uh, most of the stormwater, because everything flows south uh through this development, the stormwater is all heading primarily to the farmed field. The Stratton property to the south here. Um, so really, these areas over north or to the east and kind of to the north will be minimally impacted. There's obviously a stream that comes through here as well, but this is the least dense portion of the development. So hopefully stormwater management uh will be minimal uh to surrounding properties and then being being or buffered by the retention ponds. We also wanted to solidify through this P U D, which would be retention, which is pond. So everything blue will be a pond and everything in green would be more of like your detention basin. So traffic management came up a lot uh at the planning commission meeting for for good reason. So kind of going through the different uh areas on North Broadway, the, this will have a turn lane uh when you come down from the south to enter into the development. And then a turn lane for a right hand turn into the development from that. On the Miller Road, uh, North Broadway corridor, uh, there would be a turn lane that goes to the right of uh off of Miller Road. And all of this is from a traffic impact study that was conducted by the applicant. And would be required with any type of development scenario. So on Drake Road, it calls for a left turn lane for the first uh entryway as you head north. And then the same uh left turn lane as you come up uh as well. And then at first, they did have this oriented here, the farm across the way here with the wedding venue, their houses right about in this area. That was a concern, I think, from from those folks about having the lights shine right into their house. Uh, staff with with the applicant to move that entrance up as much as possible because there's a little bit more green space uh to alleviate that concern to the greatest extent that we can. So it moves that entryway up about here on the concept plan that's within your packet. So the Drake Road, Miller Road intersection came up quite a bit, obviously with school traffic and urban crust uh fields that are up there. So currently, it's a level C, um, and then with no development by twenty thirty six, it would get to a level D, which is a start of the traffic breakdown of according to the traffic impact study. And then in twenty thirty six, with the proposed development, it would get down to an E, which is getting to be a real problem. Um, if the developer, the developers only required through these traffic impact studies to get it back to the current situation. So they would have to get it back to a D level, which would be the current situation in twenty thirty six for them. Uh, the city's goal, I think, is to take some of the work that they're doing here, supplement it with our own uh study that we've done and get this to a B. So we're hoping to solve some of that backup traffic that you see uh really caused by the school primarily. And I think the solution to that is as opposed to just what would be uh required from the developer, which is a right hand turn lane. It would be the installation of a roundabout through this area. I think that's been determined that's the only thing that can get it to that B level status, which would be better than its current conditions, obviously. So the criteria for a map amendment, uh, the proposed mix of residential uses aligns with community needs that were identified in the city's comprehensive plans, including large lot homes at the community's edges and single story patio homes. And the layout reflects a commitment outlined in the pre annexation agreement with Turtle Creek Township by placing larger lots to the northern boundary while providing a smooth transition to adjacent rural areas. The southeast portion of development does feature a denser cluster style design that preserves open space. And in total, over a hundred and ten acres of open space are dedicated to protecting natural features within the city. So because of those reasons, at their October twenty first, twenty twenty five meeting, the Lebanon Planning Commission recommended approval of the zoning map amendment and P U D concept plan to city council, subject to the conditions in the staff report as well as the following. That a traffic impact study is completed and implemented for the project and the surrounding area.
That's all I have? We agree.
One quick question. On the cluster grouping, what were the, I thought I heard you say that the lot widths were fifty?
Fifty two.
Uh, I thought that they were thirty when we were looking at it. So the, so the, to the lower right, those is.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So fifty two, both on this one and for the patio homes.
Wide or deep?
Uh, wide.
Okay.
A hundred and thirty deep.
I think we were using, I brought up the thirty as a reference out and that shit had a. You can really, I think that's where the thirty came from. You were asking, you said, I'd like to see a fifty foot, I said, we didn't see a thirty.
Okay, yeah.
The only good fifty three, one that we have that's fifty three is the patio homes that are in countryside that are a good reference to to the fifty three.
And it's on those, Greg, are those are attached, are you talking about the attached patio homes uh in uh countryside or they're?
Uh, no, these are, it's more like a senior lifestyle that you go back on Countryside Drive.
They're individual homes though?
Yes, just past the Neos and the next street.
Where there's two together.
No, they're individual.
Okay, so those are fifty three?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good.
We have the developers here also, if you would like to speak to this prior to opening it up to.
All right, good evening. Uh, my name is Matt Maynes. I'm with the Therese Company to eleven Grand View Drive, Fort Mitchell, Kentucky. And I'm just um here on behalf of us and the Hensley Homes and the Schwartz Family Trust. Um, first off, I just want to tell the staff, I appreciate all the time they've put in. Um, we've worked on this for quite a while now and it's, I really appreciate their uh their cooperation and kind of where we've gone. So, um, um, as always, the staff does a very thorough report. Uh, some of you were in the planning commission meeting, so some of this will just be reiterating some things I've already talked about. But um, I understand and respect this is a big decision, so I want to make sure that everyone has all of the information that we can, um, even if that means repeating some things a couple of times. Um, just to make sure that uh you are comfortable with what we're proposing and can make a good uh good decision based on that. So just a few goals, uh, just wanted to kind of go through the background, progress to date, where things have had, what's happened, what changes have happened. I want to go over and do a little plan review, uh, sort of discuss the products that we're proposing on this site. Uh, talk about some of the challenges that we've had and some of the challenges that on this site and how we've addressed them. Uh, highlight some of the community features and then, of course, take any comments or questions that the um that the council may have. So first off, a little background update, again, the site's about three hundred and fourteen acres, uh, kind of sandwiched in between Broadway, State Route forty eight and Drake Street, just north of Miller. It's sort of highlighted, this is just sort of an aerial, sort of bird's eye view of it. Um, first step, uh, this was approved in October fourteenth, it was the annexation that brought in this three hundred and thirteen acres into the city of Lebanon uh from Turtle Creek Township. So uh, there was a pre annexation agreement between uh Turtle Creek Township and the city of Lebanon. So uh, again, you've been working through that for a while. So now we're at the current step, which is the rezoning, as discussed, rezoning from rural residential to a planned unit development. Um, and a lot of these meetings, I always get asked why, why a planned unit development? I think there's a lot of uh misconceptions about what a planned unit development is. Uh, ultimately, it's all about flexibility, uh, flexibility for everyone involved, so it becomes a win-win situation for everyone. Uh, it has the flexibility for us and our builders to meet the market demands, but it can also stay sensitive to sort of some of the natural features and follows what the city, the township, everyone involved um looking for. So before the annexation, as I mentioned, we went into a pre annexation uh agreement with the city. Uh, a couple of the big stipulations on that is, one, they wanted to require thirty five percent open space and a maximum density of one point seven two dwelling units per acre or five hundred and thirty nine total units. So uh, we are meeting that, we're coming in a little bit lower than that. Uh, one of the things you're going to hear me discuss a lot tonight is a balance. Uh, we really wanted a balanced project for everyone involved. Uh, so what does that mean? Uh, the city made Turtle Creek Township some promises. You know, they wanted to have larger lots as we moved north. They wanted to maintain some of that rural character by pushing the sort of houses off of the streets. They wanted that preservation of open space. So it's balancing that with the city's objectives of maintaining those high standards of building, uh, high quality finishes, you know, promoting aging in place, giving a variety of housing. And for us in the Hensley Building Group, you know, what we're balancing is how do we access the utilities that are that are there? How do we create houses that are attractive and attainable to the buyers that we're going after? And how do we cooperate with the city to kind of execute this plan? So I really think what we've done here is really worked a lot with the city to create that balanced plan that I think meets all of these objectives. Uh, so to kind of take a step further, we're looking at the envisioned Lebanon plan. And so while this wasn't in the plan, it was part of a a study, the Miller Road Study sort of group or area. And so, you know, first step was establish tier development. So as I mentioned, lots increase in size as you move north on this development. And we really tried to bring larger setbacks from those roads, enhance the entrances to really make that nice looking corridor up Broadway and up State Route, uh, up Broadway and up Drake Street. Um, create a place-based innovation district, it really doesn't apply here, that's really more to further south. But um, again, to do that, you need the residential development to help support that area. Um, protect natural amenities such as street canopies and blueways. And so what this design does and what the P U D does is you cluster the developments in other areas, which are more appropriate for the development. And that'll keep you further away from those streams and further away from those um, those more established wooded areas. And then finally, uh, update regulations to uh support conservation. And again, uh, the P U D again provides flexibility to allow us to save that thirty five percent of open space. And finally, explore trail connections, which we have done. Um, this development's going to create some connectivity between the school areas on both sides and the path or system, hopefully to the south, and we'll discuss that a little more. So from just a little history of the plan and where we came through, we came in with a mix of fifty to sixty five, eighty five hundreds, you know, five hundred and sixty total lots. From that, we've uh kind of worked a lot with the staff to uh to kind of pull that to where, as he mentioned, it meets into the framework of what the city is looking for. So this was the plan that was submitted, um, originally with the P U D, uh, with the rezoning supplemental. Uh, so we increased the sixty five foot wide lots to seventy wide. We moved and ordered all the hundred foot wide on the top of this, in the northern part of the site. And that left us with that first iteration, which was one point seven two units per acre, about five hundred and thirty nine lots. So since then, um, throughout this process, two of the biggest changes we've made is we redesigned that southeast corner to reduce uh, reduce the number of fifty two foot wide lots. And we pulled some of the lots back from the kind of riparian zones around those stream areas. So um, you know, we really think that created a much better layout specifically for that southeast corner. Um, and you know, for us, it's going to benefit us too. It's just going to make for a better quality homes in there. So I think it was a good, a a good movement forward. Let's just have a closer view. Um, so a couple of changes since the zoning commission that were discussed is, one, we moved that um, the one entrance on Drake Street about thirty feet to the north. And that sort of kept it a little further away from the houses across the street. And then we've discussed, and while it's not shown in this plan, we can easily add that stub street down to that property to the south. That keeps that little area um open for development if it should ever occur, but it keeps it from getting landlocked. So again, to go over some of the products being offered, first is kind of what we call our pure style home. Um, you know, this is really targeted for first time home buyers. And I understand it's still at three hundred and ninety seven or four hundred and fifty thousand, that's still a um, you know, high priced home. It's what, in order to keep the quality that Lebanon demands and what we can build and what we feel comfortable building, that is really what we can do. And you know, what this home does is it's on smaller lots that cater to what this market wants. Um, you know, a lot of these buyers are, you know, young adults, don't necessarily have the bigger families, they don't necessarily want the bigger lots. the bigger families, they don't necessarily want the bigger lots, so it, it really is a lot that is catered towards what we're seeing as the market demand. Um, they're more curated designs, so that helps to make them a little more affordable and a little more streamlined experience, and, um, you know, one of the important things to this is, we have to maintain the finishes required by, uh, City of Lebanon standards, so that's all brickstone.
Just one second, just for the audience, I'm not sing-alonging anybody out, but whoever built this room apparently thought they were building an echo chamber, so the acoustics are ridiculously bad. I mean, if you say anything in the background, it's like you're sitting right here, just so, just so you know. I just don't want anybody to, to, uh, talk over this gentleman, and I want to make sure that the council people can hear the presentation, so, uh, thank you for your, um, attention to that.
Thank you. Yeah, um, so as I mentioned, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot about a balance. Um, you know, for us to get less expensive than this, i- it's really starting to look at attached products, condos, townhomes, and really, I don't think that's what's appropriate for this site, I don't think that's what the city wanted for this site. So, um, uh, this is, you know, uh, sort of what we think is the most appropriate for this area. Um, you know, again, this, even in this price range, there's very few houses in this price range, I think recently I did a, a search on realtor.com, and there's less than thirty resales in Lebanon, um, at this price range. So, these are some examples, real-world examples of lots that are on this site, uh, on this sized lot with these setbacks. This is in, um, Harrison, Ohio, one of our communities called Trailhead, uh, so this is sort of the streetscape that you're looking at with this style of home. Um, again, city of Lebanon, we'd have more upgraded finishes, so there wouldn't be any vinyl siding or anything. These are some interior finishes, again, these are ranging from about fifteen hundred to about twenty-eight hundred square feet. Uh, the next product type is a patio home. Uh, while we don't restrict these in any age groups, they are, um, they are, generally the architecture is meant more for one-story living, and for that reason, they're, they're all ranch-style homes, and they typically cater towards that empty nester buyer. As part of this product, uh, you also have the lawn maintenance, snow pushing, and, um, yeah, like fertilizing, those type of things are all handled by the HOA, so it's full maintenance by the HOA, and again, those are part of the reasons why those cater towards empty nesters. Um, we probably sell ninety-plus percent or to that demographic. So, uh, these are ranging from about four hundred and thirty to about five hundred thousand, again, about thirteen fifty to two thousand square feet, uh, most of these are two to four bedrooms, uh, typically they have finished, well, they all have finished lower levels that are more for entertaining, uh, guest bedrooms, um, but the primary suites and are usually on the first floor of these type of products. The next up is, uh, what we would consider our move-up buyer, uh, families with school-aged childrens, um, you know, again, they're, they offer a lot of customization to suit to lifestyles, uh, ranging from a price of what we would expect of five hundred to six hundred and twenty thousand, um, they start to get a little bigger, nineteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square feet with two to five bedrooms, and again, offering one-story or two-story options. Then you get into, uh, more of the luxury buyer, um, which is the eighty-five-foot-wide and hundred-foot-wide lots, so these larger lots, um, typically what those mean are side entry garages, uh, bump outs, additional, uh, three-car garages, and for the trees-built homes, these are six hundred and thirty to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus, and again, those are sort of, uh, pushed more up to the northern portion of the site. Getting a little bit larger, higher-end finishes with twenty-three hundred to about thirty-four hundred square feet. From there, you really move into what the Hensley Custom Home Builders are going to look at, and that's a hundred and thirty-foot-wide estate homes, so these are really the true custom home buyers, um, you know, lots designed to allow for a kind of a one and, one-of-a-kind custom home building experience, uh, pushing, you know, anywhere from a million to four million dollar price range, um, we'd really like to look at this site as being a potential, uh, homerama-type site in the future, and, and, um, that, that's, they're very interested in looking at that. Um, you know, four thousand to eight thousand square feet, really high-end finishes and sort of extraordinary interiors, uh, we think these lots are built and designed and sized appropriately to sort of meet this style and meet this demand. So next, we'll talk a little bit about the challenges. Um, first and foremost, we talked about the traffic, so I appreciate the city's cooperation with this, uh, we've talked, uh, Missoros went through the turn lanes that are being proposed, um, so the traffic, we're confident that that's the improvements that need to be made. I think the, the biggest question was that Miller-Drake, uh, intersection, and I think the city's sort of taking that, um, taking that on and making that improvement and looking towards that. Uh, next, sewer availability, um, as you mentioned, the sewer was brought through this site, um, a little while ago with the intention for serving the, uh, school, and with the intention that if it ever gets developed, uh, we can tap into that. So, we've been working a lot with the city, with the neighbors, to try to find the best solution, um, with the least kind of long-term maintenance, and, um, we've really been moving forward and in good progress with that, to create a gravity-type system that sewers to the south. So, um, you know, earlier on, we were pursuing sort of pump stations, um, and it's just not ideal scenario for anyone, so we think we've, uh, we've come up with a plan that is going to gravity that sewer to the south, and with the help of some easements through some of the neighbors to the south. Uh, school capacity, um, I understand it's always a giant topic of discussion for these. Um, you know, fortunately, uh, we've talked to the superintendent, uh, multiple times, um, and, and he did write us a letter recently, and just providing some input and support of the project, um, you know, most importantly, you know, for us, we try to reach out as early as we can, so everyone can start planning accordingly. Uh, you know, he did appreciate that the diverse use, the diverse types of housing, um, and addressing, you know, with the city's help, some of the traffic concerns, I mean, ultimately, that was probably their biggest concern, was that traffic. So, it's important to understand that, you know, we're not looking at any tax incentives or tax abatements for this project, it is all financed by us as a developer, um, and as we go through this process, we'll continue to work with the school district to understand the phasing and communicate, uh, you, you know, with them, so they can accommodate and plan accordingly. Uh, one thing that's important to note, and I, I think I've mentioned this to all of you before, is that we typically build built-to-order homes, meaning we develop the lots and our customers come in and buy the lot, choose their house, and then put it on, we don't go out and build thirty, forty, fifty spec homes and then start selling them, so we phase that in over time, and generally, that allows the schools to, uh, phase their, uh, improvements to kind of help accommodate that. And then, of course, the stormwater stream protection, um, you know, with any development, you're obviously putting new roads in, you're putting new rooftops in, it's going to create more stormwater runoff, and we understand that. Um, fortunately, we have very good engineers who, um, understand that, they work with the city, they work with the county, they work with the state to create all these basins that, um, not only function, but create a lot of attractive amenities for the residents of the site, and what that does is it allows it to collect that stormwater during those big storm events and retain it and hold it and release it at a slower rate, so all those properties downstream don't get impacted by it down the road. So, um, you know, we appreciate that, and just, it's important to understand that there's a lot of eyes on this and a lot of people that manage it, and Lebanon, as much as any city, is on top of it, and make sure we know if there's ever any issues that we need to resolve. So, some of the community features, um, we have three entrances, so we, well, these are just some examples of some signage, uh, that will have a similar scope and size, um, we'll, we'll probably have a sign of some sort at each entry, they might not be identical, but they'll be complementary to each other. Uh, we'll have an amenity center with, um, you know, this is an example of the one in Harrison, Ohio, pool, kind of clubhouse, playgrounds, uh, again, we want to pull people in and around those ponds, so, uh, things like hammock parks, uh, little gazebos, those type of, uh, those structures around the community. Um, probably the most important feature we ever offer in any of our communities are sidewalks and trails. Uh, we've talked a lot with the staff here about how do we create that connectivity to kind of pull people down into the city center, um, how do we create those long walking trails, and I know they're working with, uh, some of the residents to the site, to the south, to understand, are there potential parks in the future, are there potential future trail connections, how can we make this the most attractive sort of greenways in and around our site? So, we'll continue to work with, through that with them. And then, as I mentioned, the parks and green spaces, creating places, um, with unique fire pits, small parks, uh, you know, lighted sort of, uh, meeting spaces for the community. So with that, um, again, I just want to thank the city, I want to thank the staff, uh, we're very excited, we've had a lot of success here in Lebanon, um, it's been a great place to work, and it continues to be a great place to work with for us, and, um, with that, I'll just take any questions.
Very good. Any questions from the board?
What's the build-out on the anticipated?
Um, I would expect it to be probably ten years total. Um, you know, we typically try to put about twenty to twenty-five of each product type in at a time, so we'll develop a little chunk of it, and then as we start to sell those, we'll, we'll add some more, so it's, a lot of it's sort of based on the market, but, um, we would be pretty confident in five to ten years.
The Toll House Farm development that you're doing?
Yes.
One-twenty-three, what would be most similar to that in this plan?
Um, they're probably orange sections, the, the eighty, eighty-five-foot-wide lots. Yeah.
You referenced, uh, neighbors to the south, what, what location, what are, what, I know there's the farm, there's farms, but what neighbors are you mentioning to the south?
Um, there's Mr. Harmon and Mr. Stratton, we've talked to both of them, and, you know, for the sewer, we'd have to go through both of their properties, and we've talked to both of them, and, and continuing to talk and work with them, so, uh, there's a lot of details to, to kind of move that forward, but I think we're moving in a good direction.
Okay, I was just to make sure we weren't thinking, um, back towards Lebanon, the...
No, 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 just the ones, just south of it, just the ones that were touching.
And did you plan a sidewalk? Uh, I know there's a trail plan, I'm imagining, I worked at the high school for several years, and that was always my issue with any kids that wanted to stay after school, and they didn't have a ride, they had to navigate a very dangerous Drake Road, especially when they were snow-mounded on each side, they would walk in the street, so that prohibited a lot of the kids from even staying, because there was no access to get back into town. And I see the trail, is that a diagonal from Miller, Miller Road, diagonal, so I'm walking up Drake, I'd have to turn left, hit that diagonal, go, was there a plan to put a sidewalk just along Drake?
Yeah, so, um...
As well as the trail?
It's, it's really going to be based on what sort of evolves with the trail system, I think, more than anything. Uh, that specific trail is going to be a larger, um, like eight to ten-foot, uh, biker, hiker type trail, and it can either go along that stream, which is probably ideal, it's, it's a beautiful walk, if you want to take it, um, or if, you know, things don't kind of move forward with a park to the south, we don't really necessarily want a trail that goes nowhere, we'll still have a trail along there, but we put a more of a substantial hiker-biker trail along Drake Road. So, either way, I would expect a trail, a sidewalk along Drake Road, where we have the larger ten-foot hiker-biker path, is sort of up to sort of how things evolve.
I, I know that that's a, a good selling point, because that's also outside of density and all the other things these developments bring, um, just that high school was built like on an island out there, it's never been accessible, it's very difficult to get to it unless you have a car, and a lot of kids don't, so...
Yeah, and, and part of it, we really have to work on kind of understanding, well, uh, walk across the street and making sure that we, whether it's some sort of traffic calming measures or something, to make sure that we can get people safely, and, uh, obviously, it's sort of outside of our, you know, jurisdiction, but we'll work with the city however we can to get that done.
That was, another one of my comments was thinking, again, walking north on Drake, turning left to hit that trail, we got to get across Miller. Now, we've got those issues in town with some of our bike trails now that we're working on, crossing busy roads, Main Street, and other, so, Hawkeson, some different things that can be put in place, it's just, I know it gets very busy, have, have you been out there in the mornings ever to see what happens out there from like six-thirty to seven-thirty?
Yeah, not quite that early, I, I know a lot about what happens on that, on that, when the school coming in or coming in and out of the school specifically and, and everything that happens there. So, our traffic study, our traffic study did take traffic counts during those times.
It's, you gotta, traffic studies say one thing, and sometimes they say, like, we don't even know where there, where there was a one development, I could've sworn they were at another site, because they were saying there's no problem, and I'm thinking, where were you sitting actually? Because I see problems there every day, but you, you, it helps to visually, I know it's, you're not going to be the one building around that, I'm doing, you know, but it would help to understand the community that we represent, why this is an impassioned concern that try, it's not just more houses and more stuff coming to Lebanon, it's that intersection is bad, so...
One thing I will mention too, that, um, you know, I think we've talked about it in the past and some others, but by annexing this project into the city of Lebanon, the city of Lebanon has taken over a little bit more control over the speed limits and what can happen on those roads adjacent to this site, because before, I, I believe it was a, a county roads or some city roads, but now the city of Lebanon has a little more control over that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right?
Yeah.
And if there's any follow-up, I'll be out there.
Absolutely. Now, I'd like to open up to, uh, citizens who came to speak to this, on behalf of this. Uh, if you come to the lecture, the, the timeline is three minutes, and state your name and address, we'd be happy to, to hear from you. If you have any specific questions to the, the developers or Greg or city planner, you can, you can take care of those too.
Yes, my name's David Whitley, uh, my address is twenty-one fifty-three, State Route forty-eight North, Lebanon. We live directly across the road, um, I think where they're going to put in the forty-eight turning lane is what I'm assuming they're going to do. I would like to ask, whoever's the developer, are you going to be, when they do the turning lanes on Drake and forty-eight, are you guys involved with that as far as location of the length of the access in and out, or would that be like, uh, Jervison or somebody?
Um, we, we control the entrances and, you know, one of the things we always look at is the distance.
So, the Red Rock, there's three houses there, uh, from south, from the junior high up to where we are is the last house, right, directly across from our driveway. Do you know if they're going to take the little brick house down the north house, farthest on forty-eight, to put the access there, or are they going to try to access the existing driveway that's there now? Do you know ballpark what they're going to do as far as the location of entryway in and out?
Greg, can you help us? I'm not sure...
The reason I ask, if you come out of the existing driveway now, um, on Schwartz's, you can't, there's a dip, and you can't, if you're coming in, if the traffic coming into town from the north, heading south, there's a dip, and you really can't see the cars, you can see them by storms where the ax are on top of the hill, but if they dip down, and we all know how busy the roads are at, um, rush hour, so I don't know if anyone's actually physically went out there, and is that going to be approved by ODOT as hard, I mean, somebody I'm assuming is going to go out there and actually look at this before they put in a driveway?
Yeah, so, so I, I have pulled into that driveway, the house will be removed, so I think the driveway, do you look at?
Yeah, it's very close.
Yeah, it's very, it's so, it's kind of close to where that driveway is.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's a little wider, so, um, but as you're leaving, it's probably going to be roughly where that driveway is.
Are they going to raise it, or do you know as far as the height, or are they just going to leave it where it's at? Or do you know?
Yeah, let, let me jump in, so I know with, with the city standards, um, you know, the access point is going to have to meet ODOT standards, so once they get into the detailed, uh, design of the construction plans, um, it will be reviewed to make sure it meets ODOT standards from a site design standpoint, um, so, can't answer that until they get to that point, but I can say with certainty that it has to meet those ODOT standards. that it has to meet those ODOT standards.
Okay, is there going to be a turning lane, I'm assuming, on the east side of Forty-Eight, going in and out of that?
A, a right turn in.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and that's all I have as of now. Thank you.
My name is Anne Rose. I live at sixteen seventy-four Drake Road. I am two houses to the right of the Miller Drake entrance. And on probably a monthly, if not more frequent basis, somebody has ran into somebody from the back, and they're in my driveway. Not to mention that there's oil or some kind of something spilled in my driveway that never gets cleaned up. But my issue is that it seems like the city is more concerned about their back pocket than the safety of these children. And there are wrecks there all the time. These kids cannot navigate a straight road, and you're going to put a circle around. And you're going to say, no, we want you to do this circle right. I'm seventy-one years old, and I still have trouble navigating those things. So for these children to navigate this, when this is how they drive, looking at their phones, and that's why there's about two accidents every other month or every month. And they're not going to be able to navigate this. So for them to be subjected to a roundabout is just going to increase your traffic, increase your problems because you've got sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-old kids trying to negotiate this roundabout. So just as a rule of thumb, I've lived in Lebanon for almost forty years. I can't tell you the development on Drake, Drake Road. When they put the school there, I said there's going to be accidents. And there was at that time a hill, and somebody had enough sense to get rid of the hill. But we still have kids wrecking every day on this, every day there's wrecks. And you're going to put three hundred or five hundred houses, and you're going to put two turn lanes on Drake, and you don't think that's going to increase the wrecks? It's going to increase it multifold, and maybe even to the point of now we're going to have some fatalities out there. We did, eh, thirty years ago with the hills and stuff. But now we're going to put five hundred houses out there and expect that these sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-old kids are going to be able to negotiate this. It's not going to work.
Can I ask, go ahead. Can I ask one question? Just for clarity, when you say the city's concerned about their back pocket, what, what did that mean?
I don't know who's benefiting from Drake's home, but I promise you, in my mind anyhow, and I could be wrong, and I probably am, that there's going to be somebody, Lebanon or, or Turtle Creek, or somebody's going to benefit from all these houses. It won't be those of us who live on Drake Road, I promise.
So the comment, that comment and the concern about the, the intersection were two separate ones?
Yeah, I guess, I guess that's just me kind of being angry that for forty years of living here.
That's fine, I just want clarity.
Absolutely, I mean, who is going to benefit from Drake's homes? We don't need any, we've got plenty. Our, our schools are so crowded now, we're going to have to increase school size. So who does benefit from having this many more homes? I would really be interested in learning that.
That, that information, the overcrowding, you know that we're under enrollment, correct?
No, sir, I'm not aware of that because my son's forty-four years old. I don't have children.
Well, I know, I just, I, I just, I'm going to, to the audience, I love you all being here because normally it's empty chairs, and we have to read feedback, except for our fans. We have two fans. And so this isn't, this isn't, I'm having a conversation finally with the people of Lebanon, and I, and I love this, so. But there is a letter, which it was actually posted, too tiny to read, of support for, and I'm not showing my hand, how I'm going on this development because we're all listening and taking this information in, but the superintendent supports this development and feels it fits in their growth projections. Because I do, all I got is social media, just like most of us. And people speak their emotions often more than fact. And so I have, what we do as council is to read through, listen to everyone. Of course, we know the developers want this, and they're going to...
Of course they want this.
Yeah, absolutely, and we know the landowners want this. We know the community is coming out like they don't want this, but we, we need to know why, and is there, are there good reasons on both sides, and make good decisions. That's why it's grateful you all are here, asking questions and ask them all. But the schools are not going to be, from this particular development, the impact is not going to cause them to have to build. So that, take that with you, and there is a letter, we'll make sure, so you can read it, of support from Mr. Seavers. Not just saying, hey, Greg, build more, and he's saying because this could happen, it's going to fit to our plan.
What is that going to mean to our taxes? I saw some tax abatement and some stuff up there, and I have to tell you, I'm a nurse. I know nothing about all this crap here, so, you know, I'm just being very honest and very transparent here. But, so I don't know what that means taxes-wise, because as we all know, a big portion of our taxes are, do go to the school. So is this going to increase our taxes for school purposes or for any other purposes? And you probably can't speak to that, you're probably the wrong audience to ask for that. But how is this going to benefit, or how is this going to affect us from a tax standpoint? Can anybody respond to that?
Can you, Mr. Brunka, and you're right, this may not be the venue, but this was laid out as well, the impact of a development on our police and fire, on our street maintenance, on our schools. Each one of those homes that, that lives, that's one of the benefits of having it here and not in township. We would be able to collect an income tax, which with that many homes, that value of probably, if you're foreign to four million dollar home, you probably have a pretty good job. So is there a way, and I don't want to put you on the spot, that you can, that little synopsis of what you told us? Because that was our concern as well.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I think, first of all, there are no tax abatements associated with this project. I think that's important. You know, it's been really kind of city council's policy not to provide tax abatements to residential developments. So earlier this year, staff, you know, Greg was involved, Brian was involved, really took a look at probably five or six of the active development projects in Lebanon from a financial standpoint. And what we looked at, obviously, when you build new homes, you know, that ultimately does lead to the need for, you know, new police officer maintaining streets, you know, as those homes get built. So we looked at the expenses associated with the demand that this placed on city services. We also looked at the expenses associated with the school system and what it takes to educate, you know, per child. But then we also looked at the revenue associated with the project. So revenue would be income tax, the residents living there pay. Property tax revenue, obviously, you spoke to that. But it's also important to note that the developer pays a park and a transportation impact fee for every lot that they build on, and that's, that's for any residential development in Lebanon. So I don't have the specific numbers in front of me for this particular development, but I can tell you for both the city and the school district, when we looked at both the expenses and the revenue associated with it, it was net positive cash flow. So obviously, you know, we were sensitive to, is this going to be a drain on, on city resources? And the answer to that is no.
And I certainly would hope that the administration of Lebanon, be that the folks that are sitting in front of me or anybody else within this, within our city, would be cognizant of how that's going to. I, I would hope that you would have done studies to determine that. But who's studying these kids that are wrecking all the time in front of my house? Who's studying the concern for these children? And, and furthermore, those of us who've lived here for, you know, a while now, I mean, like I said, going on forty years for me, it's kind of hard to watch our rural community now become not such a rural community, and that's a personal thing for me. But I really feel like there is going to be a lot more benefit for the city and of course for the developers than there are for the citizens of, of Lebanon.
Ma'am, I want to try to answer your question, but I'm going to, I really appreciate your candor and your honesty. I'm going to tell you upfront, and my answer is probably not going to be very satisfying. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to, try to address your concerns, but I, I can't guarantee it's going to be satisfactory, okay? The city, we don't dictate to people what they do with their private property. We can't. We have zoning laws. That's how we hopefully control development. We can't stop it, okay? What we can do is try to regulate it in a reasonable way to make sure that the development that goes in is quality. You're not getting substandard roads, you're not getting substandard buildings. It isn't a bunch of little cheap homes that look like garbage in ten years. That we can do, okay? And, and it's harder than you would think to draw a line between, are you really? Well, one of the things that we had to consider is, is it likely that that property, if it remains in the township, is going to develop or not? And I would say that it's likely that it is going to develop, whether it's in the city or not. And frankly, the city, just because we've been here a while and have devoted a lot of time to it, has stricter zoning regulations than the township does, okay? So what we can say is we think that the development will be, in general, higher quality, will make more of the neighbors pleased with the, the quality of the development than if it was just left to be in the township, and it had township zoning and township buildings, et cetera. So we can kind of try to do that. As to your question about traffic, you know, the way that, that's a state route, the way that we have to go about that is the traffic studies. And I can tell you the council, you know, and the administration has looked very closely at trying to leverage whatever control that we have over the property to see that the developer contributes to making that safer than it is. That's when you saw the D to B. We're trying to improve the safety. Now, is that going to mean that no, no teenage kids are going to wreck there?
No, they're still wrecking.
That's, that's not going to happen.
No.
We can try to make it safer for the hypothetical average driver, which is what we're doing. I've been here for a while myself. I've seen the growth. I know it, it's not as, the, the traffic situation isn't as safe as it was when there were not that many people here. So, not that it matters, but I do sympathize with your perspective, okay? And I realize that my answers for my, my little talk here is going to generally be received like, yeah, but I really liked the way that place was, and I hate to see it change, okay? I understand that, I sympathize with it, I empathize with it. As the city's lawyer, the only thing that I can tell you is there's only so much we can do. Okay, you know, people own property, they want to sell property, they want to develop property, I'm sure. The builders want to make money. We're trying to balance all those things. I think the developer said something about making everyone happy, and I kind of inwardly chuckled because there's nothing that you can do to make everybody happy. You might as well just stay in bed if that's your plan. It's just not going to happen. So hopefully, this has helped a little.
I appreciate you letting me speak. Like I said, I've been here for a long time, and I, I feel like our little city that we all moved here because we love it so much is no longer a little city anymore. But I certainly have exceeded my three minutes, so I appreciate your time.
We don't, we don't count the time, I've laughed.
And I appreciate, oh, you can come on. I mean, you can come on up, and I'll just kind of lather while you're coming up. The, the concerns that were just raised are the exact same things that were.
My name is Tom Biggs. I live in Lebanon. I don't have no questions for them, but I have for you guys. You guys have any plans for a future of Miller Road? Are we going to keep it two lanes? Are we going to four lanes? I mean, are we going to wait ten years till we have to? Because it, I went to a softball game one evening, and it took me three times, wait for the light to change to go through it. I mean, it seemed like we just keep kicking stuff down the road.
Was your, was your last name again, Picks?
Pardon?
What was your last name again?
Biggs, B-I-G-G-S.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will, you know, this, with this project, they will be adding a dedicated turn lane at the intersection of Miller Road and Broadway. And then we've talked about the improvements to, to Drake Road. But in terms of widening Miller Road between Drake Road and Broadway, short of the addition of that turn lane at Forty-Eight, we do, do not have any.
See, I think it should have been four lanes when they first built it. I mean, try crossing Main Street in the evening time in rush hour, that's, that's all I got to say.
Scott, could you explain the Safe Streets study? Because that encompasses the whole city, so.
Sure, yeah, so we, earlier this year, we, we commissioned and completed a Safe Streets for All traffic study. It really looked at major roadways around our entire community, looked at accident history, looked at community surveys, feedback, to really identify what are the priority streets and corridors for us to focus on in terms of roadway improvements that are geared towards safety improvements. As a result of that study, there's, I guess, three major areas that were identified. One is the intersection of Columbus Avenue and Miller Road. So we are pursuing grant funding to improve the, the functionality of that intersection. The other priority location is the bypass Forty-Eight ramps in East Main Street. For folks that, certainly for folks who are trying to turn left onto East Main Street, that's problematic. So we've also applied for grant funding to pursue improvements at that location. And then bypass Forty-Eight coming down by Cook Road, there were some recommendations there. So, so, you know, it was a comprehensive study, and, and, you know, widening Miller Road, I can tell you it didn't come up through that planning process as a need. But the intersection of Miller Road and Columbus Avenue is the highest priority need, and that is one where we submitted a grant application to, to work on that.
What do you think the impact of us building that and then pulling back a porch across Miller Road without the traffic? I mean, that is, sooner or later, we're going to have to do something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what kind of helps with Miller Road between, was between Drake and Broadway is really no curb cuts, so there's not a need for a left turn there just because there's no access points at this time. But you're right, I think over time, if that changes, certainly the city.
Well, see, what comes from the bypass going to Drake Road, I don't know why they did it with four lanes to there.
Yeah.
That way, they could turn left on Drake Road.
I, I do see improvements coming down the pipeline for Miller Road between Columbus Avenue and Drake Road. So on that side, yes, I do think you're going to see some improvements for, for that stretch of it.
If I can just speak to that for a second. So I was talking with one of my colleagues on the OKI Board this last week, and we were in town, it was just awarded eight hundred thousand dollars for a traffic study from Lebanon to Springboro, seventy-five to seventy-one, looking at bridges, looking at roads, looking at on-off ramps, looking at roundabouts. And I think that's going to be a three million dollar project. And the different townships and jurisdictions will kick in a little bit of money to do that over the next twelve to twenty-four months to try to address that very thing. So as our communities grow, we can apply for federal grants so that we're not as local entities, shoulderin' all that burden, so.
And, and the comment about Main Street, I mean, that's a state route. Unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do. We can't restrict trucks, we can't do that.
Well, I know that, but I keep hearing we're building a bypass soon. Is that true?
That road building a bypass?
I think, that's one of the things I think is going to get studied. And I don't know, I mean, that's going to come down to county and townships, and we've talked about that for twenty years.
Yeah. Obviously, that's a project that the city couldn't take on our own. And at this point, there hasn't been kind of a regional support to, to do something like that.
But I, I start to say, I do want to address the schools. The school enrollment is actually on a decline over the last five years. So I know it's been out on social media quite a bit, and I think it's five years. I know it's been on the decline, so, so the concern about the schools being overwhelmed, that's, I'm not going to put words in, in the, in Mr. Seaver's mouth, but I mean, I can, I can imagine that's why he has helped support, he wrote a letter of support because, because enrollment, student enrollment isn't a decline right now, just for clarity. So if I understand that.
just for clarity, so if I understand that.
And just the third time for Char.
Yes.
So first of all, Vicki Powell, I live at two-two-five-eight North State Route forty-eight. I'm directly north of the plan, right next to where the more expensive homes are gonna be, so I guess I lucked out there. My question, well, a couple of them, I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget, is about the traffic. And I think when we had the planning commission meeting, I appreciate that there's a lot of people studying this, and we hear about studied this and stuff. Where does the general public read those studies? I look for them, I can't... Like, people talk about they did this study, or they did that study, or to Mr. Woodley's point, this came up before. No, they did a study, and you don't have any problems at that crest in the hill, but I can tell you there are problems. But I just, maybe if people could read it and understand better what the plan is, it might save some, you know, left to our own devices, we'd probably come up with things that are much worse than really are. More directly to this division, so if I read this right, even though there's only one entrance onto forty-eight, somebody could conceivably work their way from Drake Road through all the divisions and end up on forty-eight, right? Is that right?
No, unless there's a bridge over the creek.
Well, that's on my list, too. So if all these things connect, what I can envision is somebody going, "I'm not gonna get in all that mess at the roundabout. I'm gonna just cut through this division and go out on forty-eight." So I would, I mean, again, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, I don't know for sure, but I know I've done it. You know, if there's a faster way and the traffic's backing up and I gotta be somewhere, I'm gonna take the easiest route to get through there. So I do think, there's a lot of talk about Drake and Miller, which is very important. I travel that way, too. But I feel like forty-eight always kind of gets pushed aside, or, you know, "Oh, well, the state owns that, and we can't do anything about it." But it really is important because there are dips and valleys in that road. And I know many times I've tried to pull out of our driveway, and there's a car up on you, I mean, you don't see them when you turn out, and the minute you turn out, they're like right up on your tail. So I would just say, please, pay attention to forty-eight as much as we are Drake and Miller 'cause it is busy. Let me make sure. Oh, the other thing I wanna mention, two things. Number one, of course, you know the best source for news is Facebook. And I did see something about there's another farmer on Drake Road that's approaching the city to sell their land. So here we go again. Again, I get what they're doing, and I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, but it's, let's look at the big picture instead of addressing all these things one at a time. And then, my favorite topic for many reasons. I do believe on one of the maps, it showed that there was a connector from this property to the property that Mike Williams owns. So conceivably, yeah, conceivably, there could be more traffic coming through there 'cause I don't know what Mike's plans are for that location. But I know he's kind of been waiting for an option to build his property in there, too. So it may be more homes, more traffic, more whatever. Oh, sorry, I thought he was gonna say something. And then, stream. There is a stream that goes through, well, many streams. But I can tell you the one behind our property, it backs up frequently. There's a lot of trash and junk and logs and things that wash down there when there's a heavy rain, so I hope you're taking that into consideration and that somebody's gonna clean that out before we do all this 'cause it can get backed up pretty... In fact, it's gone over our driveway a couple of times. So that was it. And then, oh, well, these houses have City of Lebanon water? Okay, 'cause I'm the... We're the last house supposedly to the north that has City of Lebanon water. So when you add all these houses, please don't mess up my water pressure. I'm like, we're gonna be the last one on the road. And it's been great, not complaining, so I just wanna make sure that people are aware that, you know, don't drag from that.
Thank you very much.
And I think that's it. Oh, wait, I forgot, one more thing, 'cause I just did it. I don't, I don't understand it totally, but there's this big, long pole that suddenly showed up to the right or left of our driveway, and they tell me it's counting water. Does anybody know anything about that? Does Hudson, you know? It's a big, they just put it up a couple weeks ago.
Oh, that, so that is, that, I think, I'm looking at it. I think what that is, is a data collector for automatic metering system. So because, like, you're not, you're not in the city, but you have city water in the response along the roadway. So we have a system where, instead of having to pay somebody to go out and manually read your utility meters, it submits the data to...
I wish they put it in a better spot, 'cause it's like, right, it's like, what is this? I thought, I got excited, I thought it was a traffic study. So you can imagine what, when I heard it's water, I went... Now, I'm like, now it's just a ISOR, get it out of there. So I think that is everything ahead. Thank you.
One thing, to your traffic, to your traffic study question. Most of the time, they're gonna be in our packets, but sometimes those packets are huge. And you might not even know where to even look for it. But if you do have a specific question about a region, reach out to one of us or Mr. Branca, and we can email those to you.
Well, you know, I think the problem is, again, left to our own devices, we probably conjure up way worse than it may be, I hope. But if we knew where we could go read the information, and I appreciate the Imagine Lebanon site, I think he has something to do with that. And he usually posts good information there, too. But still, it would be good to just go see the original source of the information and read it for yourself.
Yeah, if you wanna follow, you can email to us.
Yeah, you can do the study, if you wanna give that contact to Mr. Burke, just email him.
Oh, and one more thing for Drew. I would like to have a direct contact because, like I said, I'm right next to where they're gonna be tearing stuff up. Maybe Mr. Woodley would like that, too, like somebody we can call when something messes up and say, "Hey, I'm your neighbor, can you help us out?" That helps. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You need to put her on staff, she's street patrol.
It's so pretty!
I do, I love it.
My name's Kathy Stein. I am a former city employee, retired after thirty-four years. I live on North State Route forty-eight, and I agree with the traffic is gonna be horrendous. It's not good right now. You should see the tankers that go through there. I mean, it's tons and tons of UDF tankers that go from Texas Eastern all the way down through there. Not to mention all the kids that come out of the high school. The kids at high school have either to go north to one-twenty-two and across to forty-eight and down, or they go down Drake. But the ones that come past our house in the afternoon, good lord, it's terrible. And they're hanging out the windows, giving people the one-finger salute, yelling and screaming, it's not fun. Where I live is a high-traffic area between Kirby Road and Hoffman Avenue. And I have approached the state twice now to try to get a turn lane because of, like he talked about, the rise in the road. During the daytime, you can't see if somebody stopped on the other side until you're on their trunk. And we've had many, many wrecks, but not enough fatalities, according to the state, so they won't do anything. Our house, like your house, was fairly close to the road.
They took the guardrail out by the horse farm for a reason.
Sure. And, you know, they put in the rumble strips in the middle of the road, and you'll be standing there doing dishes, and you hear "brrr", and you're thinking, "Oh, God, just go back in your lane, don't hit the house." And it's not fun. Now, X amount of houses, you're saying that the schools are not full right now, they're empty or lower in population. That many homes, plus the homes that are on sixty-three, they're coming in. And the other developments behind Walmart, there's one. All those homes are gonna have kids. They're gonna go through the schools. And what does that do to the retirees with homes and their property taxes? Somebody's gonna pay for it, and we're all gonna get to pay for it. And it's not easy. Our retirement check isn't going up like that. So that's another consideration to people. This, when we bring more people in, we figure there's gonna be at least two kids per house. And if it's a retiree that's getting one of the patio homes, are they raising their grandkids? There's things to think about there. But the traffic is gonna be huge. Will Route forty-eight, up to that point, be in the city? Or is it gonna be patrolled by the county and the state?
It'll be in the city, which also allows us to reduce the speed. So that's one of the things that we're looking at is with the city essentially kind of annexing the roadway, at least up to, in front of this development, we are looking at the speed reduction measures along that corridor.
But we're understaffed at the police department.
Pardon me?
We're understaffed at the police department that's still in the same building since nineteen-sixty-five.
We're gonna let it.
I was there for thirty-four years, and I've been gone for twelve. And my whole career there, I kept hearing every five years, "Hang in, get there, Katie, in another five years, we're gonna have a new building." And it's never happened. It's been forty-six years now, and we haven't had anything. They sorely need it. I know they're tired of getting their personal vehicles damaged with vandalism, tires cut, cars scraped. They don't have any place to park, they have to resort to what on-street parking is left downtown, which that's another whole issue. More jut-outs, more patios, and we took out several streets of parking that used to be there 'cause I enforced it. So, you know, there's a lot of things to be considered, but the main thing I'm worried about is the situation on forty-eight and what that's gonna do to everybody along forty-eight. And this, the Ray Rock Farm, I have an emotional tie to. When we were kids, we played down there. We walked down there, not along the roadway, it was still too dangerous, but we walked along the creek bed. And we walked down there, and we played in the big pond that's no longer there. This is a big move because, once it's gone, it's gone forever, and it's never coming back. So we really need to think about it long and hard and make sure it counts, especially for Mr. Ray Schwartz, who was my bus driver for years and a good neighbor. He was a fine gentleman. Thank you.
Bus to Lebanon, remember that? I just wanted to make one quick comment on that. You know, when we moved to Lebanon in the early sixties, Turtle Creek subdivision was just being built, and Baby Farms was the only subdivision around, Turtle Creek was the second. And I'm listening to, that's my, I always feel for those, like those homes that are on Drake Road and forty-eight, you can't say change is inevitable, but it really is. I mean, every community in this county, even Little Carlisle, Franklin, Morrow, I've been doing a lot of work in Little Miami area, there's subdivisions everywhere. I would never in a million years, thirty-five, forty years ago, thought that we would have a building, there was thirteen thousand people in this town when I left in high school, and we're max now. But why all of us ran for council is not to stop growth, but to manage it the best way, like Mr. Yurik was bringing out. There's just legal things that we can't control, but we can do things, we can institute things that control what's going to happen and how it's gonna look, and do it the best way possible. Our mayor said something, we had an interesting conversation in our work session. We're not all on board, we're not all thinking the same. And so sometimes social media thinks that we operate under one brain. We have, we have seven of them up here. Smaller, some are smaller, but some are larger. Mark had said something that, even though we were disagreeing on a point, he said something that I thought about all week, that, you know, Lebanon has so much to offer, why not offer it to more people? And I thought, you know, if you're looking for a great place to live, this is the town to live. And when I say it's the best city in Ohio, I mean that. I grew up here, I left here for many years, and I've said this before. I said, when I lived in California, I turned around and faced the east and said, "We could go anywhere," and we picked Lebanon for a reason. So I'm, I'm one of those original pioneers, but I'm also a newbie. And I know a lot of you guys have some years in town, but most of the people that we talk to are newer to Lebanon, so they moved into a home and caused the growth that we're all complaining about right now. They're here telling me, or telling us, Lebanon's changing. And I come back with, "You were part of that change when you moved to Silverwood ten years ago." Or you moved to Poplar Hills, or you moved to Garfield Park, or Revere's Run, or Noah's Crossing. We hear the complaints about change, but you instituted change, too. All of us did, who moved here in the last forty or fifty years. We all changed the face of Lebanon. On council, why we run, why I run, was to help that face stay the strong value system that we have, where when someone has a need, we respond. When someone needs a meal, it's made. I've been following that Nextdoor app, which people put out care things. "We need, so-and-so needs," and there are twenty-five people respond. That's the kind of community I wanna live with and be a part of. And what Mary Master said, it really stood out to me. It's like, I do wanna offer this to other people. Because it's inevitable, we can't stop it, but we can manage it. And that's what we're trying to do, listening to you all, listening to our own hearts, listening to whatever. That's what we can offer you guys back. We have no personal interest in it, none of us have any personal interest in any of this. And you're right, the developers are gonna make money, and the landowners are gonna make money, and they have a right to do that. Thank goodness, we live in America, we can make money. But we, as the city council, and it's your government that you elect, that you come in and support us, it's our job to make sure it's done the best way that we feel possible. Listen, and with this input tonight, it's been great, I appreciate it. So, change is hard. I can remember when the subdivisions were being built when I was little. I pulled up survey stakes, I remember that. When I lived on Orchard, they were gonna develop across the street. My friends and I went over and pulled all the stakes out. That's when I was twelve, you know? I didn't want development as a twelve-year-old. I didn't want my neighborhood to change. Where I played is not there now, it's houses. So we just have to think, we have to become welcoming to our future people and be glad that they picked Lebanon because it's a great town. People wouldn't live here, wanna live here if it was a place that wasn't a great community. So it's a compliment to all of you in Lebanon, townships and the city of Lebanon.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to address a couple of things as well.
And then you're next, in the back.
I used to live on Hoffman, so I totally understand that. I used, you know, when I would turn right, I would be paranoid. You know, every time you stop there, like, "Are they gonna see me?", you know, before you turn in there. So Scott, is that something that, in any way, we could, obviously, it's a state, it's not our area, but that we could maybe, you know, throw a little support in maybe the state looking at that some more with all of the things that are happening, not just this development, but in the city overall? I mean, 'cause I remember, I've been through there, you know, thousands of times. I've lived off of forty-eight for most of my life, and so I understand what that's like over there.
The Hoffman div is, right?
Yeah, it's scary, yeah. And trying to get it, if you live there, it's terrible. Sometimes you'd sit there for ten minutes, so that would be a question. And then, regarding the schools, and I have several kids in the schools, I absolutely understand the concern for that. And, you know, Mr. Phil mentioned this, but we were really surprised. We did have a meeting with our superintendent about it, as several of us did, because, you know, there would be the misconception, now we know it's a misconception, that the schools are overcrowded and things like that. And he mentioned to us that, you know, they have a lot of data that they're looking at. So they get information on births from the hospitals, like the local hospitals. They also were looking at all of the developments that we've been talking about. So we have approximate counts for, you know, how many people that would be, what the families would look like. So they took all of that information, and even with all of that information and the current amount of students that they had, they told us it was not a concern, at least for several years down the road with new buildings. And I mean, I can tell, we were surprised, too. I had to clarify that, is it, really, for real? So, you know, and then, the tax part of it, I wanna make sure that I'm not saying the wrong thing. I know a lot of people, even we, when we have conversations with the school, worry about how taxes work, it's extremely complicated. But is it correct, like, if a new, when a new development comes in, those individuals are paying, it doesn't affect what other individuals are paying? Just because there's more students doesn't mean that the current residents are paying more? The new residents are paying into it as well?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. I mean, these residents will be paying property taxes like everybody else. And I know, I don't wanna speak for the schools because I know they have multiple levies, and I think some of them are framed differently, but, you know, on some of those levies, as new people pay taxes, it actually lowers existing taxpayers because the, you know, the amount that they're collecting through the levy has to stay the same. So as new money comes in, it lowers the burden on existing property taxpayers. On some of those levies, again, I know they have multiple levies in play, but correct?
And by the way, I don't say that because I'm super excited, okay? And by the way, I don't say that because I'm super excited, okay? I'm with you. I, I've said this is a forever thing. You know, I've lived here my whole life, my, my parents have, my grandparents, you know, brought my, you know, our families here. So I, I say these things because I understand where we're at and what are the limitations of what we can do on this sort of thing. Um, but I, I do want people to understand that I, I can't speak for everybody, but I know for myself, I take it very, very seriously. And, um, when we build those homes, that's forever. It's not, okay, we do this for a few years and we don't like it, let's get rid of it, what do we want to do next? So when we think about what we want our city to look like, it's, it's, it's permanent.
Thank you all very much. Uh, my name is Dr. Elijah Davis. I live on Phillips Road in the home that I was raised in. Other than my time away at school, I have lived in Lebanon my entire life. In my boyhood, I rode my bicycle around the country roads, fishing in farm ponds, and in this way came to know my neighbors. We also farmed a little, keeping enough cows or sheep to at least feed ourselves. I was proud of these things, proud to be from the, uh, from the country outside of a small town. At school, I told my friends that I was from a rural area and that I wanted to return and raise my children here. But now I tell people that I live in a formerly rural area, outside of a formerly small town. I will not let my children ride their bikes on our road due to the traffic. Four of the farm ponds I spoke of are surrounded by houses like the ones being proposed here tonight, and many of the others have been built on. Last winter, on a particularly wet day, I unloaded hay on the road, uh, what used to be a common practice. I was cussed out and threatened with arrest by an off-duty trooper who had just moved into the development, just like this one, down the road from me. Developments like this change the culture. You may think also that I'm being merely sentimental, but I assure you that this is not the case. What I am asking is a very logical question. When does it stop? In my forty-two years here, I have watched development after development. Logically, I thought they must have stopped somewhere. But as I drive around now, it is clear that there is no stop in sight. And I cannot help but wonder what the next forty-two years will bring. No doubt that we will hear, we've already heard lots of slogans and cliches about progress and continual growth. But again, what is the end logic of constant and infinite development? That's a, not a rhetorical question.
What were you on?
Phillips.
Phillips. Well, I can give you a, a specific answer. We have about twelve percent left. So that's when it stops for Lebanon.
Or are we just gonna go up after that?
No.
So, I mean, is our goal to develop everything? Is that the goal? If somebody wants to sell, will you approve it? You said earlier that you can't tell people to do their private property yet. I've, I've built on my house, I know that's not true.
I think if you go on the city's website and go to a comprehensive plan, Vision Lebanon Plan, it shows and kind of defines what would be, you know, I guess what the city at the time considered the growth area. So if your question is kind of how far out could Lebanon grow in the future, um, that document, I think, does-
But is that our goal, is to just constantly, no matter what?
There's a element to it.
Yeah, that, that's basically the goal, that's the end.
And then what?
And then we maintain?
I think that's part of my point. Why can't we start maintaining now? Like, this is supposed to be a conservative community. We don't conserve anything. We, 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 we let these companies come in and just build and build and build. What are we conserving?
Constitutional property rights. So the, the owner of the property has constitutional property rights to do whatever he wants and sell it, and sell it to whoever he wants.
And we could zone it and say, you can't put two houses on every acre and a half. If we were gonna conserve our culture around here, it would make much more sense to sell this off into five, ten, fifteen-acre lots, have little farmsteads, like the ones that I live on. Like the ones that I grew up on, maybe many of you grew up on. Not to jam all of these ugly houses into a small area and adjust everything.
Issue becomes, if the city potentially doesn't get involved, um, it could be even more dense just outside of this, outside of city control. Right? So they have the constitutional right, the developer now has stricter standards because the city is now getting involved with what they can and can't do. If the city steps out, then it might not be five hundred and eighteen homes, it could be six hundred and fifty. So we're trying to do what we feel is best for the citizens, given the hand that we've been dealt as well.
It's a valid question. We, we're battling with this sort of thing. So, so in, in the state of Ohio, there's eighty-eight counties, right? Ohio just put out this population study. You know how many, you know, counties are growing in Ohio? Fourteen. The rest are in decline, substantial decline. So on one hand, we, we happen to be one of those counties that are growing. Then you've got some around Columbus, around Cincinnati. Uh, so, yeah, in a way it's a blessing, it's a curse. And, and then, you know, on top of that, you know, we're very mindful of people's rights. If we did nothing and left it in the township, they could still tie you into the sewer line. We, we can't do anything about that. So the PUD allows us at least to have higher quality buildings because we have higher quality. Uh, some, some of the things that we've talked about is, okay, what about more affordable housing? I mean, I have four kids, four kids went through Lebanon. And, and so do we, would we want to reduce the quality of the homes so that they're cheaper? I don't think we want to do that for Lebanon. Uh, you know, there's complaints from developers about the standards that we have, that they're, that the quality of standards. You mentioned it in your thing. You know, so we don't want to reduce that and, and have houses look like crap in ten years that don't, that don't stand up or can resell. So I agree, it's a tough question, but, um, but this particular development, we're better being involved and controlling it through PUD than not.
And just to clarify, you're on the other side of seventy-one, right?
Yes.
So you're out in the township?
Yes, I am in the township.
Okay, just making sure.
But my neighbors live in Lebanon. My kids go to Lebanon.
Exactly right. I just wanted to confirm, I, I hadn't heard of that road.
No, it's, it's about, I mean, you're raising the things we debate.
All I know is I wanted to come home, okay? Before I left tonight, or when I asked my daughter if I should go, she said yeah. Because she doesn't want to live here if it's gonna keep growing and become a big city. That's like what she's expressed to me, right? Um, so if we want to maintain whatever it is that's special about us, you know, putting in a subdivision, it looks like every other subdivision doesn't really make us special. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, sir, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here about the traffic. I live in sixteen, seventy-four Drake Road, my wife spoke earlier.
Beat that dead horse.
Beat it, beat it. If he wants to come out and look at the traffic, he's more than allowed. He's, anybody from Dries Home can come and sit in my driveway around six or six-thirty or seven in the mornings. Then they can look at it personally. They can more than welcome, they can give me a call or whatever, say they're gonna be in my driveway. More than happy to. Because my wife was telling the truth. I've helped many young kids and waited for cops. Young ladies, young, I mean, I've had three or four cars in my driveway at once where they rear-ended each other. And I've said, I asked to make sure they were all right, make them pull my, throw cars in my driveway. But the traffic is horrendous, as you said, sir. And I'm just saying, anytime you want to send somebody out there, anybody wants to come out there and sit and watch it, he knows, you, you said it yourself, I'm just telling you, it's horrendous for a bad amount. It's backed up on Miller, it's backed up on Miller the other way towards forty-two, it's backed up everywhere. I mean, it's horrendous. And he said that nobody, you know, anybody wants to come out there and sit and look at it, they can't. I'm just, anybody wants to. I'm just putting that out there. That's why I'm not trying to beat a dead horse.
No, no, I, I, like I said, I have four kids with my youngest, just two years, two and a half years, three years almost out. I've sat in that traffic for, you know, probably eight out of four years. I, I know, it's-
I try to get out, I've got not enough lane sometimes and trying to get out is crazy.
I, I told, um, council and, and hopefully that message got relayed. If the traffic study does not include the, the, the people that's doing the study sitting out there at that timeframe and that traffic, I won't even consider it as being valid because you have to go out there and look at the peak. I mean, you know, when they develop roads, they, you, you can't always develop a road for the peak usage because, you know, it's just like a highway, it's too big, it's too wide, too expensive. But you have to consider that, that peak usage. So, yeah, and-
I know you guys are looking out for the kids. I, that's all I worry about really. I mean, kids can get hurt, hurt really bad when they're not paying attention. You're driving a two thousand, three thousand pound car, you know, it, it just, you know, I, I mean, anybody wants to come out, I'm just putting that out there to be like, they can come sit in her driveway.
No, they have to sit in it. They have to sit in the traffic. That, that's what makes it real.
Yeah, we don't, we don't leave between seven and eight in the morning if we go to work half an hour earlier. Or we, I'm retired now, but we always had to be a half an hour.
Yeah, my, my concern, I'll just might as well express this. My concern is because the traffic backs up from Drake Road down to forty-eight or the Columbus interchange there. So it already backs up there. So I'm curious how the roundabout will help that. Uh, because you got the buses, when they pull out, they stop all the traffic and it just backs up. So I'm curious to read all that, understand it, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a problem.
I literally, I got in four, I was with the, and I have a lot of drugs for that. But I literally take my life in my hands just to cross the road, get the mail every day. Especially at two, three, and you're riding, it's very, very dangerous.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Tina Willey, twenty-one fifty-three State Route forty-eight. Um, the traffic, I'm gonna talk the traffic again. Um, like, we just had all that work on Broadway, like, going on. We live right there at the crest of the hill. It backs up constantly. It's constant screeching, and that's with no additional houses. That's just normal traffic. We had a yard sale, they, it, it's, it's kind, like, right at the crest there, right across from this proposed entrance. It, it's screeching as soon as somebody stops or anything and they can't see them until it's too late. And I'm really concerned about that entrance there because it's literally right across the street. I know there's bigger homes going in over there, the less volume there, but like, I don't know where the plan is. So if there's someplace I should look, Facebook is the only information that I've seen. I got a letter from, I don't know who, but it was the plan and it was so small. I, I mean, I couldn't, I can't understand it. And like, can someone explain more the entrance on forty-eight? And I'm trying to understand how that impacts me. Also, you know, we have animals as houses. It's an eighteen ninety-four house. And, you know, that entrance is right there and there's so many, like, what happens when they go into our yard or all that kind of stuff? It's, you know, I'm just worried about that.
Greg, we have a picture of that entrance.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, so the problem's gonna be when they pull out, come to town. There's gonna be people in our yard and there's gonna be cars and a wreck.
My question too is-
We live an acre mile north of the junior high school, which, and I think, are you related to Jim Norris?
Yes.
Yeah, he was my teacher. So that was the high school then, now it's the junior high.
But are you on the, are you on the junior's high side?
Yes.
An acre mile north.
Okay.
From the junior high, with the big white farmhouse almost touching-
The barn falling down, everybody knows.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I call it I forty-eight. It is dangerous.
And I even, I work in Springboro, I, I actually work at Tractor Supply and I work, I opened a new tractor supply. And that was a nightmare, just getting, like, I don't even know, two miles from my house. And now I work in Springboro. And I will, if I go and have to be in during peak times to take a left out of my driveway is literally, I, I'm gonna be late to work by no plan, like, a lot of lead time. But, you know, it's-
Would you guys like to speak about, yeah?
Sorry.
So first off, I want to thank all the residents. It's not always as reasonable and, and, and worthwhile in some of these meetings, so I appreciate it. Uh, a few things about the traffic, um, to understand is, so the traffic studies tell us, basically, how do you get in and out of the development safely? So we're adding turn lanes, um, in and out of the turn, in and out of the development. So a left in and a right out. Uh, what exactly the site distance, until we get into final planning, we're not gonna necessarily know exactly the site distance because we don't know exactly how high the road is or whatever it is. But at the end of the day, as Mr. Brunkett mentioned earlier, we have to follow ODOT standards. And so the site distance is gonna be adequate to get in and out of those entrances. So, um, you know, all the traffic at this intersection is going to be getting better. And not only do we look at it now, we look at it with development and we look at it with ten years of growth on the development from our development and just a growth factor in general, uh, in the area. And that all gets sort of dictated by the county and the city and everyone and traffic manuals. As far as the other intersections go with forty-eight, um, you know, again, we're adding improvements there. So, so the traffic, there'll be additional turn lanes, um, the lights will be improved, the light timings will be improved. Uh, you know, whenever we talk about traffic, there's the concern, is everyone going too fast or are they stopping going too slow? So we try to slow down people who are going too fast, we try to get people moving. And that's really what the improvements are, is to have people move safely through those intersections. And all of these improvements are going to help do that. It's going to improve the traffic as it is now, to keep people moving through those. Um, roundabouts, I understand they're comfortable, especially when coming into a new community. Um, and I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm probably not gonna be the good person to sit in your driveway because I don't have any worthwhile knowledge about it. But we rely on traffic engineers. And in this scenario, the city actually is, has their traffic engineer that is saying the roundabout's the way to go. And what that roundabout will hopefully do is, again, improve traffic so it's not backing up at a stoplight. It's continuing to move through there, but it's moving at a pace. Um, you know, I just know from doing this that roundabouts, um, yes, people are uncomfortable with them, but there is significantly less accidents at roundabouts than there are four-way intersections. And even when they do have accidents, they are very minor accidents because they turn into just fender benders instead of someone running a red light and getting hit. So, um, the idea scenario is this is, again, it's, it's moving traffic more smoothly at that Drake and Miller intersection that prevents things from backing up, which helps the forty-eight and Miller intersection. And then on top of that, there's turn lanes at all of our entrances. And the site distance is going to be adequate when it's all said and done. Um, you know, again, my number, I'll give everyone my number and email address if there's any concerns and questions as we're going through the process, because there's a lot of fine, detailed engineering that's gonna go into it to, until that point. But, um, the bottom line is we have to sort of meet the minimum standards and we have to improve traffic, not make it worse.
So let me ask you another question aesthetically. I can sit on my porch. My porch is twenty feet off the road. And when I looked at that plan, it seemed like there's green between forty-eight and these houses. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Why, why is it not that?
Yeah, you will. So one of the, that's one of the benefits of a PUD is if you went with straight zoning, all the lots are bigger lots, you have lots backing up to the road. The idea of a PUD is you can compress all of that. One of the biggest sort of, um, asks by not only the township, by the city, was to make sure that the corridors along Drake and the corridors along Miller or, or Broadway are attractive and, um, you know, maintain sort of that character. And so if you look at our plans, all of the houses are pushed back at least fifty feet off the road, if not a lot more. Um, we'll mound along the roads, we landscape along the roads. And really what that is to, not only to, um, make it more attractive for the resident, for our residents pulling in, it makes it more attractive for everyone else, sort of in the community. Um, and, you know, there's all other practical reasons too. When we develop, we have a lot of topsoil. We use that topsoil to create mounds along the roads. And, um, you know, a lot of people sort of paint developers and paint home builders as, you know, we're just, yes, we are trying to make money, but, um, Dries has a great reputation. We're from Northern Kentucky. We've been building in the Cincinnati area for almost a hundred years now. And, um, I would put our reputation up against anyone's and tell you that we're very proud. And we're not going to do a community that's five hundred and- And we're not going to do a community that's five hundred and just be homes and not make it look amazing. And, because it would be a poor investment on our part, so, um.
So your turning lane though, so you get put in perspective, here's my house, my porch, the road is where the doors. Okay, and that entrance is right there, so there's, I'm trying to understand the turning lanes, and like, how close that is, and that's really close to my house.
Yeah, um.
And what the plan is.
So I'm not sure exactly where your house is.
We're directly across, you know where, have you been there on the Red Rock Farm?
Yes.
There's a map up there. Well, there's a map here too. But I can't tell from this map, like I said, I've got, I had to have a magnifying glass for this. But the little brick home, bar this north on Red Rock. We're directly across the street from that. Our driveway almost meets that house, and I was told that house is gonna be leveled, we're gonna put a lane there. Do you know approximately from the brick house where the turning lane will be? Is that?
The brick house is up north of this one.
Yes, that's what I think.
So that is where the, the turning lanes. When you're saying turning lanes.
I don't understand, that's why I don't.
The turning lanes, when we say the turning lanes, there's turning lanes that are adding a lane in the middle of forty-eight?
So if I'm coming out, right, so if I'm coming out of the housing development at the access of forty-eight, there's going to be an additional lane on the left and right.
There can't be.
Yeah, that's one thing.
There's north and a south on forty-eight. Are you gonna put the turning lane on the east side? That would be, if you're going north, that would be on your right, going into Red Rock. Are you putting a right turning lane on forty-eight into Red Rock? Heading north.
Yes.
But when they come out and they go south, how are they gonna do that? Because now they gotta cross over a north lane into the lane plus the Star House, which is the south lane coming downtown. How will that, how are they gonna come out there to go left? Not going in off forty-eight, but coming out to come downtown. That's where the wrecks are gonna be, because of that slope I'm telling you about.
Yeah, I understand, and we may have to adjust site distance, we may have to raise the road, we may have to lower, I'm not sure. Um, ultimately, that's why we rely on our engineers to create a plan, and rely on our traffic engineers to give us sort of.
So, and if I could, if I could interject for a second. Um, the traffic here is going to be studied for years. Like, I mean, we're, we're probably talking a year, year and a half, where we're gonna be working with ODOT to get all of this correct.
So there's not gonna be any entrance for years?
Uh, I don't know about, I don't know about this phase, that can, that's more to him. But, like, for our, our development over on sixty-three, the, there is a site distance issue, and they're, and they are dropping the, the road, the pipe down. So, so they're recreating that road site distance, so it, it affects the, the way the cars enter those intersections. So there is so much that can be done in, in relation to these entrances and exits, um, that has to be approved through ODOT. Um, what our opinions are, we can have them, um, but ODOT has the final. So, there, there could be a lot of back and forth right now. We don't necessarily have all of those answers at this point.
So who, how do I get those answers? Because this really impacts.
I think what, what we've done with some other projects is, as, you know, assuming that the, you know, developer moves into the roadway engineering phase of the project, and those engineers here, um, you know, they kind of go at like a thirty percent plan completion mark, or sixty percent. Once we get those preliminary, um, engineering plans, we can, the city can host a public meeting where we send out letters to the residents that are directly adjacent to it. So you can kind of come in and see. So that's probably gonna be the best way to do it, is once we get to that point where their engineering firm has actually evaluated site distance and all the design criteria, uh, we, as a city, can host a meeting with the impacted property owners along that corridor, just to, you know, lay out the plans and talk through it. So I'm assuming it'd be a meeting for that, and we've used that for other projects.
Yeah, Parkside's one.
Yeah.
So I'm a little confused. I'm like the smartest tool in the shed. But let's say this is forty-eight, our house is over here, Red Rock's over here. So this is coming to Lebanon, or no, this is coming to Lebanon, this is going north to Dayton, up off the Cassial School. So Red Rock's over here, we're over here. So you're gonna put a turning lane over here to go in off forty-eight to the right? Is that correct? You're gonna be to the right side of the north lane on forty-eight?
Yeah, and it's strong up here.
Okay, but my question is, when they come out, you got the turning lane to the right of forty-eight, going in? When they come out, how, are they gonna cross the northbound lane and come into the southbound lane to come downtown? That's where I'm a little.
Yeah, they will, I mean, just like any other driveway or any other road that's pulling out on the, on the Broadway, forty-eight, is, they'll have to do that, and, you know, we can do that safely.
So when they're coming into town, there won't be a turning lane to go in, like there is going out of town? So when they're coming south on forty-eight, the turning lane's on the right, is there gonna be like one in the middle? Because I'm confused.
Yes, there is. If, if you look up there, there's, you can see the black arrows.
Yeah.
So there's a left turn into the development.
Okay.
And then when you're going north, there's a right turn into the development.
So the left turn into the development, if forty-eight's a two-lane, you've got the right turn over here. Where's the left line, where's the left turning lane? In the southbound, I mean.
The road has to be wide.
It's in the middle. So there's gonna be four lanes instead of three? Or is the right and left lane just gonna be in the middle of forty-eight? See, this is confusing.
And if you wanna contact me after, we can, I can say, I can say all the plans throughout the process.
Unless they widen forty-eight to put three lanes, I can see you doing a right turn on forty-eight. But if you're coming south into Lebanon, where's the left turn? If the right turn's over here, like, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yeah.
Should be determined by the traffic engineer.
Yeah, that, all those things will be determined, and we are more than happy to sit down with you as this develops, for sure.
Yeah, it's like, it's just, I don't seem like a person to.
Sure, understood.
We have toner rules and, you know, like, it's a lot of.
And we don't, we don't, we don't wanna see anyone get hurt as well. It's, I mean, it's, it's, you know, our goal is to be partners, that's why we built this area, as long as we built.
So I've lived there all my life, sixty-five years, I've seen a lot. And I will just tell you this, you're gonna have to raise the rev coming out, coming south.
Okay.
Which is another, another question, is because we've had development.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've had development in the past, and then it creates drainage issues. And I get it, the drainage is fixed over there, but what happens then? We've had to address several things that result in drainage being impacted on our side of the street.
Well, we have to, we're required not to create drainage problems. It's certainly not gonna be an issue for you, because you're north and kind of upstream of us, so everything's going south. Uh, but, even, even if you were south of us, we, uh, we have our engineers that help us out and make sure we maintain, uh, drainage, that's sort of a pre-development kind of standards.
Okay, so I'll get your information. And one other question that I had that kind of came up after we started is, I get, we say the schools aren't overcrowded, and it's, like, it really seems hard for me, so I was just wondering, is there somewhere I can see what assumptions were used for this calculation? Because, again, a number's a number, I can make things different by changing the numbers.
Mr. Norris?
I, I get it, I, we, we had the conversation.
Because it doesn't say, does it?
We should reach out to Mr. Severs. Yeah, we should reach out to Mr. Severs. And, like I said, I, I have kids that are in the schools there too, so I, I would have assumed that that was the, that that was the case.
I would attend the school board, I'd get on the agenda and attend, because more people have those same questions, and get on the school board agenda, and ask the question, and when, like, here, they have the same kind of meetings.
Okay.
And, and ask those questions.
So they, they would tell me the assumptions as far as class sizes.
Yeah, people tend to see, will give you the, the breakdown, he sent it to us.
Yeah.
When, when that, when that information came out.
So I guess it's the, it's the resident, I'm concerned residents that want more information. I need to get his contact information. What was the other person I should talk to?
Mr. Severs, Mr. Superdigger.
Mr. Severs, the left-hand school. And, and we're not, we were not presenting the, schools aren't growing as a positive, like, let's do this development. That's just a fact, that we're, I would've said the same thing if they were gonna be overcrowded.
Yeah, it just doesn't seem like with all this development.
I, I agree, and what, what Ms. Eggers brought out, I was on, when they built the new high school, I was on the committee for that, and I had, I was the one quietly yelling and screaming about that entrance that was in the valley, and I kept saying, you're putting an entrance for all these kids in a hole. And there were multiple acts, multiple accidents that I responded to. My mom was a nurse, she came to get my daughter, she ran out to pull a kid out of the car one time. I've seen these accidents, they, they're.
Yeah, that's rare in your house.
I also brought that to the attention and said to the person at the time that this is an awful idea, and the comment wasn't favorable in return, since, they've since moved that entrance out of the, out of the valley, so better heads prevailed, but Mr. Severs is very responsive and will give you a good answer. Maybe not what you wanna hear, but he'll, he'll get back with you, and those are great questions. Ask, we're saying, ask for yourself, I would highly recommend that.
Okay, yeah, I'm not against growth, but I just, the other little things are what I'm concerned with.
What questions then?
One other question, when is the time, what's the timeline? When, when are we, like, starting this process?
Um, I mean, best-case scenario, we'd be late next year, but that would be super aggressive. Um, you know, homes probably are not gonna be built until maybe twenty-seven, so.
I've got one more question, and I'll be quiet. Um, so the sewer line, where, I know what many plants are that are.
Could you, could you step up the microphone, because nobody can?
Um, the sewer line, I know you were just gonna try to go through Mrs. Stratt, is what I heard, she said no. So the pipe, um, you're not gonna do like a mini up by forty-eight, or wherever you wanna do it, and let it run down, irrigate? You're gonna do a main pipe, is it gonna come into the city, the sewer line? But my main question is, will any other residents, including myself, be allowed to tap into that? Can you get all the septic tanks?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, so we have been talking to, uh, Mr. Stratt, and, uh, Mr. Harmon, and kids, and parents, and everyone sort of involved. And so it would be a sewer main that's going through their property, we're not doing anything septic or any sort of treatment plants, it's just a regular gravity sewer that's gonna tap into that line. And as far as, uh, I'm sure the city would encourage people to tap into it if it's available and there. Um, obviously, for someone that's sort of off-site, you know, we can talk to you about, you know, the ability to do that, and sort of the logistics of getting from your house to wherever the sewer is, and, and how that would happen, and if it makes sense.
Okay. And who would I see or contact on that, you, or for the sewer?
Probably start with.
Yeah, if you have an interest in connecting to a future sewer, if you just, uh, reach out to the city manager's office, that way we can make sure we get your contact information. So as we move through the design phase, we can coordinate.
At the end of the day, it's a public utility that's gonna be maintained and, and managed by the city.
Okay, thank you, guys. I'll make this quick, you finally got up here.
Yeah.
Last but not least, I hope, my name's John Corwin. I live at twenty-eight sixty-four North State Route forty-eight. I also own a property, uh, right across from, uh, the entrance on, on Drake Road to the patio homes. Um, I don't wanna rehash this thing about the traffic. But the farms that are between forty-eight and Drake Road are small. Have you guys thought thirty years out? Because it's difficult to make a living on eighty-eight acres, a hundred-acre farm. So my question is, what are you gonna do with the next development? And the next development? And the next development on that corridor coming into the gateway to Lebanon? Is a roundabout gonna be enough? Is it, is the intersection at forty-eight gonna be enough? Have you thought about that? I mean, you, you have a wonderful opportunity before you to get this right. If you don't get it right, you're gonna mess up the future of Lebanon. Appreciate the courtesy, thank you, Mr.
Anyone else?
All right. Um, if the board would like to make any comments, they can, I know we've had a lot of conversation. If not, I'll, I'll, I'll try to summarize my thoughts. Very good. Um, okay. So I have, every time somebody mentions traffic here, I have it starred. And that is the main, that is the main thing we're talking about, is, is traffic-related issues. One thing that happens is regardless of if we gain control with annexation or lose control via non-annexation, is development. So that is a non-issue, like, that is happening. Um, what happens in a, in, with, when we lose control, is we lose control of, um, the PUD concepts. For someone to build inside of the city of Lebanon, it costs more. Uh, it is more arduous when it comes to working with, with Greg and our planning. Uh, it, you have to plant more trees. Uh, we're very aggressive with our waterways. Um, but you get some, you get some positives. You have access to our sewer. This property, one of the main reasons why it will develop anyways, because there's already a sewer there. You have access to our sewer, our water, uh, and then our city services. So there are, there are positives, um, to annexing into the city. So, moving to this intersection. So the city has spent thousands of dollars and hours and hours of resources studying the intersections around our city. Uh, this is a main one, as well as the intersection with Columbus and Miller Road, the bypass there. Columbus and Miller Road is, or Columbus and, yeah, Columbus and Miller, is, is the worst intersection in our city, um, when it comes to accidents and backups and things like that. So you take, you take that in concert with, with Miller and Drake. The, the issue there is that regardless, this intersection is failing, it's currently sliding and failing. Within ten years, it will be a total failure. Um, there, what they are required to do is just maintain that rate of decline. That's not where I want to put my eggs. I don't, I, I want to, I want to make sure that intersection, and I'm committed to making sure that intersection is a fully functioning intersection. So statistically, um, roundabouts, if you believe it or not, are the way to go. They, I don't know if you mentioned, yeah, yeah, that the, the accidents that do happen are, are less aggressive, there's less fatalities, there's less monetary loss. Um, yes, they're a little bit annoying, uh, if you've ever used them before, um, but they, but they honestly move traffic very fast and very efficiently, once everybody gets to understand them. The issue, I think it was Mr. Biggs, uh, who talked about it being backed up for four cycles. We won't even have to worry about that anymore technically, because traffic will, will move in concert with each other. So if this is annexed into the city, we're able to use impact fee funds, along with, with Lebanon funds, to develop this intersection into a fully functioning intersection for the future. Um, to, to your point, Mr. Corwin. Uh, these things, these things are, we have looked at, and, and based on, on the studies that we've looked at, these are the things that are going to help manage that growth in that area. Um, as we, we push out further, there, there, those, those farms there, those, those lots are gonna be one house to one acre. So the density of those lots, as we, as it pushes out further, are gonna be even, even, uh, less than, than we're talking about. Uh, so I've talked about control, um, I've talked to, or, uh, Dr. Davis, when we, we talked about when, when will it stop? It'll stop at about, uh, right under thirty thousand people in the city of Lebanon. We're gonna, we'll, our, we'll max out capacity around twenty-eight to twenty-nine thousand. Um, and, and after that, it is, it is management of, of the resources that we've been given. Uh, and this board's point is to manage those resources well. Uh, that's why it costs more to build here. Uh, that's why our standards are, are, are the highest in the county. Um, and we did that on purpose. Um, and we did that on purpose, uh, because we want to make sure that we finish our city out and in the most excellent way possible. And that weeds out a lot of things. Uh, our, our zoning is set in a way to weed out a lot of things. And, uh, this is just another scenario where all of those, all that planning in the past is coming to fruition now. This is a, kind of a unique situation, um, with there already being sewer there and what we know could be developed in the township relative to those, uh, that sewer access.
Green tree was an example given of what the township could do, which is a higher density.
High, that's exactly right.
What's that? Green tree. Oh, I mean, uh, um.
Yeah.
Shakeron.
Shakeron, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I, I, but finally, I just want to thank everyone for coming. Uh, Planning Commission, when, when we talked to everybody at Planning Commission, it was a very good meeting, very constructive. Uh, most of the people that came had a lot of the same concerns that you guys do. We also share those concerns. And our goal is to make sure those, those intersections and those, those driving pathways are as safe as humanly possible. Because right now they're terrible. And we've known they've been terrible and we've been actively working to, to create a situation where we can fix those. I just want to say thanks again. And if no one else has anything, I'll undertake a motion to close the, the hearing.
Second. Mr. Berkeley, color roll.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Now we have our regular items. Got about eleven things to get through.
This is very exciting.
This is very exciting, I'm sorry. If you want to say with that, you are welcome.
Run.
Let me pass.
Thank you, Greg.
What do you think Steve left?
All right, looking at ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero, uh, one zero five.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one zero five authorizing the transfers and reimbursements including the twenty twenty six operating budget.
This ordinance approves the interfund transfers and reimbursements that are incorporated into the two thousand and twenty six operating budget.
Motion for first read? Some, oh, sorry, this is a, sorry, the motion to adopt.
Some move. Second. Mr. Berkeley, color roll.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash, uh, one zero six.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one zero six approving the expenditures incorporated into the twenty twenty six operating budget.
This ordinance will approve the two thousand and twenty six city of Lebanon operating budget, which includes total revenues of one hundred and thirty three point nine billion dollars and total expenditures of one hundred and thirty seven point two million and authorizes the expenditures incorporated into the budget.
Motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Berkeley, color roll.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one zero.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one zero authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year contract with Runkie of Ohio Incorporated for refuse and recycling collection services.
This ordinance approves a five-year contract with Runkie for citywide refuse and recycling collection services to residents and businesses, including servicing multiple city-owned facilities.
Motion to adopt?
Some move. Second. Please color roll.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one one.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one 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 amending chapter nine seventeen of the codified ordinances relating to garbage and rubbish rates.
This ordinance allows for a rate adjustment to the refuse and recycling collection rates to reflect the city's increase in refuse and recycling collection cost per the competitively bid contract unit pricing. Under this collection rate schedule, the city sanitation fund will operate at a deficit in years two thousand and twenty six and two thousand and twenty seven, as we take advantage of a healthy fund balance to smooth out the rate increases to our customers that are being triggered by Runkie's increase in service costs.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Berkeley, color roll.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one two.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one two amending section nine eleven point zero two the codified ordinance is authorizing a two percent water rate increase as incorporated into the twenty twenty six operating budget.
This ordinance allows for a two percent adjustment to the water consumption rates to ensure the sustainability of the water distribution system and compliance with the enterprise bond covenants and as recommended by the update in two thousand and twenty one water and sewer rate study.
Motion to adopt?
Some move. Second. Comments? Please color roll.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one three.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one three amending section nine thirteen point zero three the codified ordinance is approving a two percent sanitary sewer rate increase as incorporated into the twenty twenty six operating budget.
This ordinance allows for a two percent adjustment to the sewer consumption rates to ensure the sustainability of the sanitary collection and treatment system as recommended by the update in two thousand and twenty one water and sewer rate study.
Motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
Any comments? Please color roll.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
All right, new business. Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one six.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one six approving the rezoning of the Ray Rock property from rural residential to residential planned unit development or PUD as recommended by Planning Commission.
This ordinance approves the rezoning of the three hundred and thirteen acre Ray Rock property from rural residential to residential planned unit development to support the development concept plan being proposed for the property.
Motion for first read?
Some move.
Second.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one seven.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one seven approving a new three-year agreement with the IAF F local forty seven ninety six and declaring emergency.
This ordinance approves a new three-year, three-year labor agreement with the IAF F local four seven nine six as sanctioned by the bargaining committee.
Come, motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
Please color roll.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one eight.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one eight approving an amendment to ordinance twenty twenty two dash zero one four to allow the Warren County Port Authority to provide financing for the Parkside State Route sixty three public roadway widening improvements and declaring emergency.
This ordinance approves an amendment to the previously adopted TIF agreement to support the widening of State Route sixty three as related to the parkside development. This change adds the Warren County Port Authority as the authorized issuer of bonds for public infrastructure improvement and allows service payments to be used to cover the debt service on bonds issued by the Warren County Port Authority. Uh, the city of Lebanon will have no liability or obligation regarding the repayment of the bond debt.
Motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
Please color roll.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one nine.
Ordinance number twenty twenty five dash one one nine approving a cooperative agreement between the Parkside Developer, Warren County Port Authority and the city of Lebanon and declaring emergency.
This ordinance approves a cooperative agreement relative to the non-school TIF agreement that will support the widening of State Route sixty three along the front edge of the Parkside Development. Under this agreement, the Lebanon School District will continue to receive all eligible property tax revenue. Uh, and the TIF agreement is only for the commercial properties that are within the development.
Motion to adopt?
Some move. Second. Any comments? Please color roll.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash one two zero.
Resolution number twenty twenty five dash one two zero authorizing the city manager to apply for a brownfield redevelopment grant to support the redevelopment of one twenty South Broadway Avenue.
This ordinance authorizes the application for grant funding through the Ohio Department of Development for the brownfield remediations program to be used for site cleanup and preliminary development of the property located at one twenty South Broadway Avenue.
Does the, should we make a note that the abstract should say resolution? Does that matter?
Yes.
Good.
So the minutes will reflect, um, the, uh, a correction to the abstract, um, on resolution number eleven. It should say this, resolution.
Motion to adopt?
Some move.
Second.
Any comments?
What was that amount?
Yep.
What we were buying?
We're, uh, we're still working through the final cost estimate, but we, we anticipated being in the, um, three to five hundred thousand dollar range in terms of the grant request.
Thank you.
Please color roll.
Mrs. Eggers.
Yes.
Mrs. Harper.
Yes.
Mr. Lamara.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Coe.
Yes.
Mr. Sellers.
Yes.
Good job. City manager's report.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Uh, next meeting of city council is the final work session of the year. Next Tuesday, uh, December second at seven P M. And I do, uh, want to highlight a couple of slides here on the Lebanon Horse Carriage Parade Festival. Obviously, it's Lebanon's biggest event of the year, uh, coming up on December sixth. Uh, the parade times are one P M. and seven P M. There are a couple of new features, uh, including free parking and shuttle service that the Chamber of Commerce has arranged. Uh, so folks who don't want to, you know, try to find a parking spot in the downtown area, um, they can park up at, uh, off of Columbus Avenue at the Vance Outdoors Shopping Plaza there. Um, they can park there for free and they will be shuttles running about every fifteen minutes or so uh, from there down to the drop-off point, which is, uh, at the intersection of East and Silver Street, uh, at the, um, Ohio Logistics Facility. So, um, I think it's a great addition again for folks. I just want to make sure folks know those shuttles are going to be running pretty regularly. So take advantage of it if you don't want to kind of fight the traffic, uh, in, in the parade downtown footprint area. Um, there are going to be, uh, some great additions to this year's parade. I know the chamber and the city have been working together to, um, uh, increase the number of kind of what we call large hitch, uh, larger horse hitch, uh, carriages in this year's parade. Uh, so we've got some great Pertron Clydesdale, um, carriages that are coming from out of town to this event. Uh, I think last I checked, there was a pool of seventy carriages signed up for this year's event, which is more than last year. Uh, but specifically, I know everybody kind of likes the, the big horses. Really focused on recruiting, uh, some of these horsemen, uh, from out of town because, you know, fewer and fewer people are doing it. So we kind of had to broaden our reach. So excited about the quality of this year's parade. I do want to address, there's been some concern, I think Brian can kind of hit the, yeah, there we go. Uh, the E H B one virus, which is, um, you know, uh, originated as an outbreak that originated in Texas at a rodeo that affects equines and affects horses. And certainly there's been some concern about what impact that might have on the Lebanon carriage parade. Um, there have been a few other horse parades in the area, uh, that have decided not to hold the parade due to, due to concerns over, over the sub-virus outbreak. Just want to reassure folks that, um, the city is, and the Chamber of Commerce is planning, uh, to hold the parade. We're excited about it. Uh, but we are taking additional safety protocols to address concerns. Any horse that has recently traveled to the outbreak states of Texas and or Oklahoma or has come into contact with horses that have, uh, they will not be permitted to, uh, participate in the parade. Um, we're certainly asking horse owners to monitor the horse's health, temperature, uh, leading up to the parade. Any horse that shows symptoms of, of that, um, should not participate as well. What's unique about, I think, our carriage parade is the horses aren't staged in a barn. They're really kind of spread out and staged at the, the school bus facility there off of Oakwood. Uh, so obviously we're going to make sure there's some additional social distancing and spacing between the horses and the carriages, um, just to kind of try to reduce the potential for, um, interaction and contact. The chamber will be providing sanitation, sanitizing stations, uh, within that staging area. And, um, there is an event, uh, Vet, Equine Vet, uh, as part of the committee and obviously, um, both the city and the Chamber of Commerce. Our regular communication with her, uh, just to make sure, um, you know, getting her perspective on, you know, the relative risk in Ohio. At this point, there's not been, uh, any E H B one virus case reported in Ohio that is associated with the, um, you know, the issues they're having in Texas and Oklahoma. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
That's important.
Don't, uh, we do have an executive session.
We do.
And I wanted to, um, make sure councilor member prior to the December second work session, it'd be the swearing in, the organizational engagement plan on swearing in all four newly elected, uh, council people. And then we'll proceed to elect the mayor and vice mayor. Thank you.
Sir. Mr. Sellers, you got anything?
Uh, just appreciate everybody that came out. Um, it's always good hearing, uh, as much feedback as we can. On that note, as well, sort of on Mr. Brunka's note, is the carriage parade is coming up. This will be the last meeting before that. So that's always a great time of year here for Lebanon. The, um, Christmas tree lighting is what at six o'clock on Friday?
Lights go on at six. So, um, yeah, free carriage rides downtown start at one P M.
They go to like, what, eight?
Yeah, and then Santa will be there, uh, the tree lighting.
And I just want to say happy Thanksgiving to, um, my colleagues and all the citizens in, uh, Lebanon. Grateful to God for his blessings, um, for, uh, for family, for freedom and values that make this country strong and values that make the city strong as well. So that is it.
I'm thankful that you're going to be leading us in, in, uh, get Christmas carols up the, uh.
Did that work in out? Yeah, it's going to be out there. How many souls do I have? How many souls do I have?
Mr. Lamara.
Um, yeah, yes, thank you for everyone that came out tonight. It's always good to hear from our, our neighbors and citizens. Just a, a real quick note on Thanksgiving. I think I've shared this in the past, but just kind of, we had a cool thing happen to us. My wife and I a few years ago, we were, there's a, a missions organization that we were invited to come and hang out uh, at the start of the school year, uh, down at U C. And, uh, uh, they had, uh, uh, this, this group reached out to kids that, that were coming in from overseas that, that weren't able to go home over the holidays, fall break, spring break, that sort of thing, uh, for multitudes of reasons. And, um, the thought was that you have a, a dinner, a regional dinner. So like if you were from, um, primarily these folks were from, from, uh, India. They'd have food that were, that was a little bit more unique to their country. So it was not like the American pizza and tacos. It's a shame that we do that to people, but you know, it is what it is. But, uh, But, so what they did is, is they would, they would sit us adults, which I hate to say that, but they'd sit us old people at these tables, and these kids would come up and sit and talk. We, we talked about them and their family, and what they're studying and all that stuff, and it, it always came around to, well, what are you curious about with, with America? And they were always, they wanted to ask about Thanksgiving. Just a unique holiday that we, as a culture, set aside to be thankful for what we, what we've been given. It's like, I don't want to talk about Christmas, I don't want to talk about Easter, I don't want to talk about your Independence Day, and I don't want to talk about any, I want to talk about Thanksgiving. It's like they just, it's like they couldn't, there's just really, they were very curious and, and very awestruck that we would set aside a couple of days just to hang out with family and friends, to just be thankful for how we've been blessed and for our country. So I just, I guess I wanted to share that and just wish everybody safe travels and, and just enjoy each other's company.
I'm thankful you said that.
Uh, just a quick advertisement, again, the museum on December sixth and the twentieth from eleven to five, we'll be having the Yuletide on Town Square. It's all decorated up. It's going to be a lot of fun. There's just no charge for family to get in, but you'll be able to get some things and bring your family and your kids. On the parade day, it'll be something else to do, just across the street. Also, want to thank everybody, I meant that when I said that earlier, it was great to see Lebanon come and have people that we can talk and communicate with, and, and the one lady did say, oh, and the information comes on via social media, which is often one-sided or emotion-driven and not fact-driven. So I appreciate the people that were there. Hopefully, they'll encourage people to come, and they'll spread the information that they got tonight with their friends and family. A couple of other things, the time of the trail walk on Friday, where is that located on our website? Isn't it Friday?
Yeah, so it's ten o'clock, ten on, on Friday. It starts in the parking lot behind the post office, and it'll be about, about a three-mile little on the French run trail.
And it was interesting, because sometime this week, somebody had put a bunch of pictures on Facebook about that trail, and said, I never knew this place was here, and they posted like thirty pictures of it. So someone discovered it. So I don't want to tell everybody about it, but you really need to see this place.
Yeah, we've done articles on it, and we're trying to, definitely trying to promote.
It's, it's fantastic, so I did that walk last year, and I'd love to do it again. And then, I, it just came from the Chamber, and I didn't know if, if the venue too brings up, but they are doing that on, on the ninth, they're doing the Fest of the Run, the Christmas Run and Walk at six-thirty, which is a Tuesday, in town, it's going to start at the Christmas Tree Park. I didn't know if that was something, was big enough that we'd want to consider moving our meeting Wednesday, so I know we've got some runners on council, I'd like to be, I'd like to be there, but to be a part of that, but it starts at six-thirty, and it sounds pretty neat, it's, the Chamber's putting a lot of energy into it, so.
Yeah, and that's actually a city event.
Is that a city? Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, and move, I don't know what it takes, if anybody wants to, if it's a, I'm not going to say worthy cause to change, but I would be open to moving to Wednesday if, to, to participate in that if we could.
Can make a motion if you want.
I'm making a motion. It's the night, isn't, just so I have my bigger Tuesday, the night, right?
Tuesday's the night, so it'd be, we'll say it's ten.
Yes, I'm making a motion to move our meeting to Wednesday.
But that would be, that would be our, our voting meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. So move our, yeah, move our voting meeting to Wednesday. Where are you at, Matt?
Um, I, I've got my son's basketball practice on Wednesday, so I'm going to be able to attend.
Can we push the vote to next Tuesday?
Yeah.
Give us a chance to chat.
Yeah.
Office and family and such.
My motion to deny his motion. Can we check?
Runners, I thought you wanted to deny.
Hey, you're runners, you can go real fast and get to the meeting.
Yeah. We could consider it a one-walk table.
Second, if there's no objection, then the minutes will reflect. The motion to move the meeting's been tabled till next week.
I guess enough time to rearrange with I C R C.
Yeah, that would be the one thing I need to check, is just their availability to telephone some meetings and such.
Thank you.
Um, other than just expressing how thankful I am for Thanksgiving and the country that we live in, and to wish everybody in the city happy Thanksgiving, I am glad everybody came. I know sometimes it feels like I want to respond, and it sounds like it might be in a combative way, but the questions were great, the concerns are exactly the things we've talked about, so, so it's great dialogue to have people come out and to be able to talk about it. And I am thankful, I get, I'm getting to host, all my family coming in, and, and, and it's just a blessed time. You know, a lot of, a lot of times, families have family conflicts, and it's, and it's, it's a struggle on these type, type of days, but just blessings on anyone that they can find a space for love and, and acceptance and, in their homes for, for family members, and, and then, of course, on Saturday, to make sure and carve out time at noon to watch the Buckeyes beat the team up north.
That's wonderful. Matt, I will stay harmony with you with goodbye.
Please.
I'm liking where this is going.
We're not, we're going to end up with like the council Christmas carol show or something. So I, let's see, yes, thank you to everybody who came today. It's very nice to have that feedback from everyone, and although we didn't have an opportunity to sit up here and, you know, carry on about all of our thoughts on it, because we've been doing that for months, and, and it's late in the evening, people should know that these are the same, like you said, this is what we've been talking about for months, and I, I have a lot of the same concerns, and I've not been a hundred percent on board, and so I just want people to know that, you know, we hear them, we see that, we're not different than they are, we, we live here, we're affected by it, we see all of these things, too. We have kids here, we have families here, we have, you know, we drive through the traffic today alone. I was coming home, it should have taken me fifteen minutes, it probably took me forty minutes, you know, maybe because of an accident or something, and it just reminded me of how much I love living in a small city and not having to deal with the typical traffic and why I don't live elsewhere. So we hear you, we see you on all of that. I also want to say thank you to all the individuals in my neighborhood and beyond who brought donations all over the community to Joshua's place. I haven't seen what the full outcome of that was, but I, from the looks of it, when we were there, it looked to be like they were going to be able to cover all the families that had signed up for meals, so that was a really good day last week, and just happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
I'm going to keep it short, because I feel bad for this guy. He's probably so young. I just want to verify what you said about the carriage, the free carriages. Is that just Friday?
Uh, yeah, so it's Friday, yeah, Friday, from, yeah, one day.
One day.
And they're located, are located right in front of the city building.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
So just to culminate this happy Thanksgiving message, Brad, some of your comments. The first, the, the first day that this was recognized in our country, yes, it was a Massachusetts holiday, northern, holiday, but as a country, we were in the middle of the Civil War. And you, you have the, the President of the United States, Abraham Lincoln, kind of going through in his address, like, all the things that, that we as a country have been, have been going through. And then, in the, in the meat of it, it says, "It seems fit that we should properly, solemnly, reverently, and gratefully acknowledge, as with one heart and one voice, by a whole American people." And I, to, to celebrate Thanksgiving, "And I do therefore invite my fellow citizens in every part of the United States, and also those who are at sea, and those who are so, so journeying in foreign lands, to set apart and observe the last Thursday of November next as a day of Thanksgiving and praise to our beneficent Father who dwelleth in the heavens." So, so even, even in a time where our country was being ripped to shreds, families torn apart, brother fighting brother, we had, we had someone who, who pointed our, and fixed our gaze, this wasn't a pastor, this wasn't, this wasn't some heavy spiritual leader, this was the President of the United States, saying, "We need to stop, and we need to thank God for the blessings that have been bestowed on us in this country." And I think it is incredibly powerful. It's one of my favorite holidays, honestly, I, as a Christian, I'm saying I like it more than Christmas. I just always have. And it's because it's a time to stop and get together with your crazy family, even if you, you have arguments and fights, and just really think about the, the year that you've had, the things that you've been blessed by, the trials that you have, that you've gone through, and the, the things that God has, has brought you through, and just to, just to look back and, and say thanks. And it's my favorite holiday, and I, I am, I'm blessed to serve with you guys on this board, and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. I wish Lebanon a happy Thanksgiving.
Motion.
I'm signing a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Ohio High Code one twenty-one, one twenty-two, G two, considering purchase of property for public purposes and for the sale of public property in competitive bidding and premature disclosure of information given on very competitive and armed advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. And also, G three, conference with attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body who is subject to pending amendment of court action. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.